Good evening. The November 8th meeting of the Evanston City Council shall come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Revelle?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
With eight members present, we have a quorum and are prepared to do our work. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing, a truth in taxation hearing for the 2021 tax levy. The Evanston City Council is conducting a public hearing on the 2021 property tax levy. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed levy. There will be no final action on the tax levy today. The 2021 proposed tax levy was included in the 2022 proposed budget and can be found at www.citiv Evanston.org/budget. I hereby convene the hearing for the 2021 property tax levy to be open. We'll begin with any discussion from the public. And we have Mike Vasilko. Is Mr. Vasilko on the Zoom?
I am.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, my only comment really is one that I sent earlier, the email. There really hasn't been public discussion to the extent, actually, there hasn't been public discussion. There's been public comments. There have been questions asked at council meetings. There have been questions asked at meetings that were supposedly just budget discussions. But there have been no replies to any citizen comments, any citizen questions. I mentioned in my email, my first opportunity to meet with the Ward, the 6th Ward, other constituents in the 6th Ward is not coming up until later this week. So after so many months of not being able to talk to your own neighbors, per se, with your older person conducting a meeting, I think the 6th Ward has much to complain about when it comes to proper process and protocol. But my understanding, listening to others who come to these meetings, prepare long, very detailed and thoughtful remarks, they get a blank stare. They never get a response. There was a special first finance and budget committee meeting chaired by Chair Council Member Nguyen, who quickly derailed that process, which was supposed to touch somewhat on the current budget, and that did not happen. The meeting went off into another direction. So at every turn, once again, following suit with the old council, the new council is doing the same thing. We don't get our, the fact that I get whatever minutes or seconds here tonight will result, I don't believe in anything. I ask that you postpone the vote, postpone this hearing, conduct the town hall discussion that was suggested by another citizen, and that would be the proper way to proceed. This is premature. It's premature to have any votes on ordinances related to the budget because questions have not been answered. That's simply my point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other members of the public are seeking to participate in the truth in taxation hearing, so now I will turn it over to members of council. Obviously, there are a number of related items on the agenda today, so you're welcome to, if you have commentary or questions about the tax levy, bring them up now or wait till a later time. Either one is fine, but now is your chance to jump in for the truth in taxation hearing.
Yes. Speaking of which, okay.
Councilmember Reed, please hold on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies.
Let's, so sorry, Councilmember, we're going to shift someone from a traditional public comment to the truth in taxation hearing. So go ahead, Ms. Keenan.
I just want to point of information, a point of order. In the hearing, residents have unlimited time to speak, right? Or they're fairly lax as far as their time limit, correct?
That's correct. I've not cut anybody off during either this or the budget hearing.
Just wanted to remind members of the public about that.
Hi, my name is Lori Keenan, and I live in the 7th Ward. I'm here tonight. I wanted to talk, as we're nearing or in budget season, as a relief to taxpayers. I got an email last week from Dave Davis, who's the community and neighborhood relations Northwestern guy, about free skating to the public at Robert Crown, which was interesting to me because it sort of felt like being invited to a dinner party at my own house where I buy the groceries. But I looked into it a little bit, and I thought, well, that sounds fun to do. And so I went to register, and the link was not live on the city's website to sign up. So I emailed them, and I asked the question and said that the link wasn't live and what could we do about it. And also asked some questions about, it seemed odd to me that the public would be invited as guests of Northwestern to our community center. So I asked, not sure why isn't the rink technically the community's rink? And even if NU paid $1 million, wasn't the entire center more than $50 million? So I got an email back, and unfortunately, Dave Davis had a death in the family, and so he was not there. But another woman in his office answered me and said that this was prepaid ice time, that Northwestern had paid to the, for the Robert Crown Center. It was prepaid ice time. And so technically, when the community comes, 100 people can sign up to skate, and that we would then technically be guests of Northwestern, which was interesting to me. So it was confusing because I feel like, and again, I have not been, I have not come to council meetings lately, but I remember pretty specifically when the discussion about Robert Crown was going on. And now, many of you are new faces here, so you probably can't answer this question. But for those of you who were council members, and maybe, Melissa, you're the oldest council member here, so maybe you can clarify this. But weren't we told that this was a donation to the Friends of Robert Crown by Northwestern? And if so, why wouldn't this be, if this is a donation, why would they be considering it as prepaid ice time? And so I asked the question, and I said, just to be sure I understand correctly, the $1 million was prepaid ice time for NU, not a donation to Friends of Robert Crown? And she replied, thank you for your kind words, because I'd said something about Dave Davis, and she said, you are correct. The $1 million is for ice time. It is not a donation to the Friends of Robert Crown, which is very confusing because it contradicts a lot of what we've been told and means, is this $1 million, was it paid to the city? Because it was called prepaid ice time. And it's, then I found an article by, in the Daily Northwestern, where they talk about it being a partnership. It says, the partnership between the university and Robert Crown serves as a substitute for the seasonal skating rink, which they used to have, but they've taken away. It says, blah, blah, blah. In the meantime, Robert Crown student skating is a stopgap option until the university can house an ice rink again. NU's $1 million, and here they call it investment, in Robert Crown, aim to help the center's long-term viability cover use costs associated with both men's club hockey and synchronized skating team through 2026. So as you enter your budget discussions, it seems like there should be $1 million from Northwestern somewhere. Is this in a Friends account, Friends of Robert Crown? Or have the Friends, and this is a legitimate question, have the Friends paid the $1 million to the city? And maybe, Melissa, or anyone up here who knows the answer to this question, is this money in a city bank account?
I think we should entertain that question since we're in budget season. I mean, we're talking about $1 million. Can somebody respond since, I'm sorry, can you read the email you got again about whether there was a donation or payment from Northwestern?
Yeah, I started by, you know, because the link was broken. And then I asked these questions, and my understanding was that this had previously been described as a donation. And she, very deliberately, I said, I wanted to be sure I understood it correctly. And she came back and said, you are correct. The $1 million is for ice time. It is not a donation to the Friends of Robert Crown. So, and I'll share this email with you and the article from the Daily Northwestern.
Do we have that, do we have money from Northwestern paid to us? Can somebody clarify? Because that's, you know, since we are doing budget season, we're looking to cover new positions at Crown. I think it's important that we understand where, how much Northwestern has paid to date? If someone could tell us? Thanks, Kate.
So what we can tell you, so Ross, top of our heads, is that the city has received $9.2 million from the Friends of Robert Crown. We would have to look back and figure out if that includes the million or where the Northwestern's piece fit into that, but we know that that is the amount we have received from Friends of Robert Crown.
So that could include money that wasn't a donation at all, but in fact, that should be revenue for us. And if there's more that Northwestern has paid that we haven't received, it sounds to me like we should certainly have that in our coffers.
We can figure out the details of where that $1 million is sort of shook out between the Friends of Crown and the city so far.
And I think that should be worked into our budget for next year, not, I mean, not waiting for it to come through as a donation, if there's money already paid for the clear use of the ice time and not as a charitable donation. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
A quick question to the Director of City Management. Director Hemingway? I'm sorry. Do we, I guess the question I'm trying to figure out is, is this a this or or a this and, right? So we, I'm assuming that there's time that you have allocated for community skate time. That could be a yes or no. And then, is whatever time, and we'll sort out the details, that Northwestern is inviting members, is it a this or or a this and that expands the community ice time?
Good afternoon, Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Rec. What Northwestern has done is with the negotiations of the use of the facility, whoever this is that was referred to by Ms. Keenan, I'm not aware of from the university, but we are, their use of Robert Crown as a whole, we are tracking everything they do in the facility. And we are deducting that cost off of the donation that they have given over the five-year time period. Now, as far as their ice time, what Northwestern has proposed is opening it up to the community and allowing community members to come and don't pay. If you come through the department, you pay your $9 to go participate in a public skate. They have said, hey, we have some, like, their students are allowed to come during public skate if there is time. And then they've also invited the community to participate for some of those, that ice time. So I'm not quite sure about the community relations people from, who has communicated that, but that's how the current deal is currently operating. Thank you.
I think the question is, where is the money? Because this is money paid to use our ice, and so it should be sitting with the city for taxpayers to help relieve the burden on taxpayers. They've made it very clear, I've also read that in articles, Marty Shapiro said, this isn't a donation. So I do think we should certainly know, this is somebody paying to use our ice. We absolutely should be able to find out how much they've paid to date and where it is.
So as I think you are aware, Councilmember Kelly, I mean, the agreement, the original agreement was negotiated by Friends of Crown, and the university, and the city chose to make the decision to use that donation from them toward the time that Northwestern is utilizing the facility over the five years, so.
Sure, I know, but we should, just like when they were, you know, made a deal with Beacon originally too, that would have been for use of it, and that would have been money, revenue that's being generated, we need, right? Our expenses, which was originally looked at to be about $500,000 a year, is now looking like it's going to be closer to $2 million. We need every dollar we can get for the taxpayers. And if Northwestern's made it very clear that this is not a charitable donation, they're paying, then that should be, we should have that money, and we should know how much it is, and it should not be written off by anybody as a charitable donation. And if there's more that they've already paid, I certainly hope that that's in a city bank account.
So I think these are all important questions. First of all, just quite similar to something we discussed last week, and please, either one of you, any one of the three of you, please correct me if I've got this wrong. My understanding of this agreement between various entities and Northwestern is like the naming agreements in that the payment, as a matter of practice, whether we like that or not, or whether we think it's appropriate or not, the payment was made to Friends of Robert Crown and then subsumed into the payments made periodically by Friends of Robert Crown to the city as part of the commitment that they made of, if I recall correctly, $15 million. And so I think it's really important for us to know exactly what the agreement is and to track down how much has been paid and where that money sits. But as a practical matter, it's all a part of the transfers that Crown makes on a periodic basis to the city and is, you know, we don't get to count it twice. It is what it is.
So they're selling our ice time?
They entered into an agreement with, I presume, Friends and us as part of Friends' fundraising efforts and Northwestern's effort to support the project, and this was kind of a perk they were given. Again, I'm not, I don't know enough to even have an opinion, much less share one right now, whether it was a good deal or a bad deal for whom or what. But yeah, that was, this was.
But I think it's important. It's not a perk for a donation. They're very clearly paying for ice time, and that's money that belongs to the taxpayers, not for somebody to decide when they want to turn it over as a donation.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it's not, I mean, I would say it's the use of the facility. So I don't want it to get caught up on ice time. Having ice time is part of their use of the facility. They have an after-school program where they are utilizing for their Digital Divas program. We are working with them now to have their Christmas party there. So it's the use of the facility, it's not just ice, and I don't want to keep emphasizing, like, that's all it is. Their synchronized skating club uses it, their club hockey team uses it, but it's for the entire use of the facility.
But I think, and I, look, I think there's concerns about the nature of the agreement. Those are important concerns to get to the bottom of. But I think the next step is, as Ms. Lewis Laken promised, just to get us the information about what payments have been made pursuant to what agreements and when, and I think then we'll be able to make.
And how much more is out there that has been made in payments to use the center? Because right now, when we're, you know, looking to cover unexpected costs at Robert Crown, we need that money.
Thank you very much. That then concludes the.
I'm sorry.
No, sorry, Councilmember, go ahead.
Yes. So I actually wanted to, you take a moment and ask Mr. Vasilko, because I, you know, I hate that we have these opportunities for public engagement, where we have a hearing, where we can have the discussion, and then we often have folks say that there isn't time for discussion. So I would actually just love, Mr. Vasilko, if you have one or two questions, please, one or two, that you'd really like answered. I'd really love if you actually asked the questions and we tried to get an answer. So if you don't mind sharing, maybe start off with one question that you'd like answered so we can start getting some answers and working collaboratively.
I'd love to ask a ton of questions, if there's no time limit.
Well, if you just want to start with one, and we can work through that one, and then we can, you know, I don't want to.
Okay, well, let's go with the one about adding more staff. That apparently is going to be part of your discussion in the budget, in the council meeting. Why in God's name do we need to add more staff? No one's, I mean, there's the argument, in order to manage the ARPA funds, we need another person or two. Maybe that's true. I don't happen to believe it, but let's say that's true. Where are all these other people coming from that take our staff level up? Again, hearing, not seeing on paper yet, up to an additional possible 100 people? What's the point of that? Second question would be, when do we start the discussion about analyzing each and every department? This is something that, I'm not sure if you said it, Councilmember Reed, and I know Alderman, Councilmember Burns said it, because I recovered an email where we apparently had that discussion, and Mayor Biss was on that email, about examining, you know, the financial ups and downs of every department. We haven't done that. We did that with the police department during the so-called defund the police movement. That took its own course, of course, and other things occurred as a result of that for that department. But what about all the internal departments? That seems to be pushed aside, and then you have.
All right, so let me.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to interject there. So, so thank you. The question that I did hear, apologies, I'm walking my dog.
So Councilmember, while you walk your dog, let's, so those were, those were direct questions, I think, about the proposed budget.
Yeah, well, that's what, if I can just reclaim a bit of my time here, but particularly since we are discussing truth in taxation, we're talking about property taxes here, right? The first question regarding staff, if I can relate that back to what we're doing here, is manager, interim manager Gandersky, I believe there's a memo that was requested or has been prepared. Do we yet know what the projected impact of these new positions will be on the budget and how that would influence potentially our need to raise property taxes a year or two down the line when ARPA funds are no longer available?
This is Kelly Gandersky, interim city manager. The answer to your question is yes. Our budget team has done some preliminary projections, and I think they're ready to discuss that during the budget section of tonight's meeting. The short answer is, even without these additional requested positions, the city is looking at a deficit of about 1.7 million, sorry, 2 million in the next three years. So even without extra positions, we're looking at a deficit. That's the short answer, but I'll let the budget team, who's run the numbers again and again, to explain that later.
And if I could just close my comments, because I know the chair of the meeting, Mayor Biss, didn't intend for me to get a second shot at this, but, you know, one point, I heard, I guess like 1.4, 1.5% more taxes is what I read, probably on the low side. There, again, there are people in Evanston who cannot afford that. Certainly, I'm not going to share any information, but there's, you know, there's about 75 people, 75 property owners, I should say, in Evanston whose property taxes are on Cook County Tax Sale List because they have back taxes going back years, in some cases, 10 years. So those people are struggling more than maybe many others in Evanston, but everybody's struggling. Any kind of tax increase is really uncalled for. You just got ARPA funds to say, we have a deficit, and we're spending ARPA funds on everything else? Well, use some of that to balance your budget where there's no deficit. There's just too many opportunities, I think, to avoid having to raise taxes. And I'll speak more at the budget portion of the discussion.
Thank you. So I'm told there was one other sign up error, and I think we have one additional speaker from the public at the truth in taxation hearing, and that is Mary Rosinski.
Hi, thank you. I want to say one, on the sign up, it was unclear whether or not that you need to sign up twice. I thought they were both the same. So in the future, if we could kind of make that link to sign up for the hearings versus of specific public comment would be good. I wanted to clarify also, I agree with Ms. Keenan, and the Robert Crown time, it's really important how we do our accounting, and we have expenses, and if someone prepays, I mean, I wouldn't prepay for, you know, 10 hours of the ice rink and give the money to the Friends of Crown, or prepay for 10 hours at the facilities and give the money to Friends of Crown. I would give it to the city. So we have to keep our expenses and our revenues in the correct columns, and the donations are like the icing on the cake. So I'd really like us to work with that and work with the Friends of Crown to invoice them for expenses as we need it. I think we have to look at the budget. But the reason I wanted to speak at this hearing is I'm so concerned that since, I think it was 2017, we had a budget of $185,377,000, and this year, we're looking at well into the mid 300 millions. And this continuous spending and not being fiscally responsible is going to cause severe problems for our city. And if interest rates go up at all, we're going to be really screwed. So I think as we go through this budget and have our ward meetings, I hope that we will really be able to cut out unnecessary, unnecessary expenses, look forward for three, five years in projections, and quit running up the taxpayer credit card with unnecessary expenses. So that's all, I didn't really have so much questions, but I want to make sure that before we go to that, we clarify the Robert Crown is an expense versus a donation and counting it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing, nothing further. I hereby adjourn this truth in taxation hearing. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is my public announcements and proclamations. No proclamations, but I just want to thank both the Firefighters Union Local 742 and the FOP Patrol, who today entered into an agreement with the city to sign a memorandum of understanding regarding the implementation of our vaccine mandate for city employees. Again, I want to thank interim city manager Kelly Gandersky for her leadership in bringing that to fruition. And just, you know, look, let's be real here, given what we're seeing in some other municipalities on this very issue, I think handling it in this collaborative way that is based on mutual respect and the understanding that our interests are all aligned in our efforts to preserve public health and safety is the way things ought to be done. And I think it's a really good day for Evanston, and I wanted to share that with everyone. With that, the next item on our agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Biss, for those lovely comments, and I want to thank our staff and the unions for continuing to work through the vaccination policy. These are indeed unprecedented times, and I think now more than ever, it's important for us to work together. I have one announcement tonight. I have Toby Sax here, who is the Chair of the Arts Council, to talk about community resiliency through the arts program. Welcome, Toby.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. The community resiliency through the arts fund is a program that we've just kicked off this week, and it's great to just spend a couple of minutes updating you on it. The Evanston Arts Council was tasked to distribute $50,000 of the Good Neighbor Racial Equity Fund to support building community resiliency through the arts. This funding will mobilize artists and cultural and social service organizations to improve the quality of life and amplify voices in underserved communities. It's an exciting opportunity that we hope will spark new partnerships between existing social service organizations and arts organizations and individual artists by funding five arts residencies for social service organizations with a budget of $10,000 each for an art program that furthers their mission work. In putting the program together, the arts council consulted with, I think, 20 social service organizations, and we found that almost all of them had run arts programs that aligned with their missions like this, and almost none of them knew what the others had done. So apart from this program that we're kicking off right now, we really see an opportunity to try and get some more collaboration, some more sharing of best practices. get some more collaboration, some more sharing of best practices, perhaps to match up some social service organizations and arts organizations beyond those that we can fund. But for the moment, this is really all about finding five partnerships to fund. The way we'll go about it is in a two-stage process. We have an open call at the moment, we had a workshop just today with some of the social service organizations, in which the social service organizations will raise their hand and say, we can see a real opportunity for an arts program here, please consider us. Arts Council will choose five of those against certain stated criteria. And then in January, there'll be an open call for artists and arts organizations to offer their services. In March, we'll match the two together, and obviously, we're not going to overmatchmake. It's for them to, we'll introduce them, we will facilitate the process, but we'll let them find each other. And then the grants will begin in April of next year, and there'll be a 12-month period for them to be delivered. We're really excited to have this very new funding opportunity put in front of us. For the moment, of course, it's just a one-time opportunity, but of course, if this goes well and we see exciting outcomes from it, I give you warning that I may come back as well as seeking other sources of funding to see if we can't make this an annual thing. So thank you. Thank you very much for the time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Toby. Next on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have no communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. This week, everyone gets three minutes. Our first, we begin as usual with those who signed up in person to speak in person, of whom there is today only one, and that's Vicky Posenko.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Posenko, and I am the Executive Director of the Evanston Animal Shelter. I wanted to address some concerns that came up earlier tonight in the Administration and Public Works Meeting about the size and scope of the shelter project in Evanston compared to a recent project at Paws Chicago. During the break between meetings, I actually called Christina, who is the COO at Paws, and asked her some questions about their project. And she confirmed that theirs was a $9 million remodel of an existing facility. So I think it's very hard to draw a comparison of the scope and the cost of that project to a new construction project that we have underway. I also wanted to be sure that we aren't losing sight of the fact that $2 million of our project is covered by a grant from Cook County. $1 million is from a capital campaign. And so when we talk about the cost of the project, we have to remember that that $3 million comes from other sources besides the city. I also just want to mention, there are a couple of things that we need to remember. One is that while Cook County does not say the city of Evanston has to spend X number of dollars on this project, there are certain criteria that we have to meet in order to get the $2 million in funding. And some of that criteria does drive some cost. And the other thing is that there is a deadline for the project to be completed by November of 2023. So thank you for allowing me to speak and have a good evening.
Thank you. Only one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Wynn.
May I ask, Ms. Posenko, thank you very much for that information. Is there any way that you could send it to us in an email so that everyone receives it? Because I'm not sure everyone up here on the dais was listening.
Oh, yeah, I'd be glad to, sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Only one person signed up online to speak in person. That is Bob Guazda. Seems as though Bob Guazda is not in the council chamber at this time. So now we move to the online comments, beginning with Eric Passit, followed by Jeremy Johnson, and then Mike Vasilko. Eric, are you there?
Okay, here. My name is Eric Passit. I'm here.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'll start my video too. Okay. Okay, so hi, my name is Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I also live in the Fourth Ward. And the reason for me coming tonight is I know you guys are discussing whether to eliminate first hour free on parking. And this is going to be my first thing I'm going to speak about. But I was in the city of Woolnet last week for dinner, and all I can tell you is quite busy, and their parking is free. And I guess, you know, the small businesses, and I don't own a restaurant, but the restaurants especially were, I would have to say, destroyed during this pandemic. And anything we can do to help these people, I think it's just so short-sighted to start raising. I mean, it's already $2 an hour to park in downtown Evanston. You know, if we want to encourage people to come to Evanston, I would suggest taking the parking that is in downtown Evanston, right in the heart of it. It's $2 an hour and cutting it in half. And I know that might sound like you're going to lose revenue, but on the other hand, city tax, you know, we get a lot of city tax from restaurants. I think we would get it back in spades with more people there. I mean, my wife and I were in the downtown Woolnet on a Thursday night, you couldn't get a seat in a restaurant. And there was a lot of restaurants there. It was a very lively place. And I don't find the same, I know it's a lot smaller of a footprint than downtown Evanston, but I will encourage you that, I do talk to people, and they find it very discouraging that it's $2 an hour to park in downtown Evanston. And that's up to, I think, almost 9 o'clock at night. So I would urge that we would table that, making that free parking for the first hour. And I mean, I know you said $500,000, but that's, you know, if we want to encourage small businesses to open up in Evanston and do better, we are doing the exact opposite, the exact opposite. You're shooting yourself in the foot. And the other thing I'll say about increasing taxes in Evanston has been, knowing a lot of landlords and being a part of a lot of landlords, I talk to them all the time, it's what I do for a living. Property, every time you up your property taxes in Evanston, you are lowering, you are almost eliminating what they call, you know, affordable housing.
15 seconds.
You know, already the property taxes have gone up tremendously for apartment landlords. And to do it again, now you're eliminating affordable housing, you know. And every time you try to make more affordable housing, every time you raise taxes, it eliminates. So that's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeremy Johnson, followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Annie Coakley. Is Jeremy Johnson there? If not, then we'll go on to Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Annie Coakley, and then Bruce Ennebach.
Thank you again. So to repeat what I said earlier, I don't believe there's any cause for a property tax increase, regardless of how big or small you might come to in a way of a percentage or an amount. The previous gentleman just said is absolutely true. You know, I've heard these analogies before, explanations, well, it's only so much per household for a $400,000 house. Like I said, there are people who are being moved out that you're never going to even be aware of because once their tax, once their property taxes or past due property taxes, I should say, are purchased by somebody, that person takes them to court. The court gives maybe an opportunity to pay back that amount that was paid on their behalf. They can't do it, somebody else is going to own that property. So there are names on that list you would all be familiar with, and it's just a shame that you think so little of some of our constituents in town, that you don't recognize some of the pain that's out there. On the matter of the animal shelter, I honestly don't know where this $9 million figure came from, why someone feels compelled to spend $9 million on an animal shelter, even considering 3 million of it, maybe from other sources. The county didn't say spend $9 million. If there are some additional things that the county insists on that adds to the cost of the project that can't be afforded within the 2 million or the 3 million and other funds, then sure, that cost maybe has to go up. But you don't have to spend twice as much for a facility with, I heard, a meeting room and, you know, whatever. Other things being thrown into a program that has very little to do with taking care of cats and dogs and other animals that are just looking for shelter, they're looking for a meal, a warm place to sleep at night, a safe place. That's all the animals are looking for. Let's not think like humans think, and all of a sudden, we've got to add all these amenities that have nothing to do with the animals themselves. I'd like an answer to the question I posed.
15 seconds.
About the cost of staff being added. There were promises made, we were going to go through each and every department, scrutinize it, just like you did the police department. My knowledge, none of that has happened, not any other department has gone through that scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Annie Coakley, followed by Bruce Ennebach, and then Cecile McHugh.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Clerk Mendoza, and members of the City Council. Thank you for providing this opportunity to speak to the amendment proposing to eliminate the free parking for the first hour and on Sundays in the three city-owned parking garages downtown. While the Board of Downtown Evanston recognizes that financial loss the city has experienced due to a decline in parking over the last two years, we do not agree that removing the free parking will have a long-term benefit, and we know that it will negatively impact local businesses that have also experienced tremendous financial hardship. The free one-hour parking and free parking on Sundays encourages visitors to downtown to support these local businesses. Downtown Evanston staff hears from businesses, residents, and visitors weekly, if not daily, about parking issues. Most recently, we consistently hear that everyone is shopping and dining in Woolnet because there are free, they have free parking. While we recognize this is comparing apples to oranges, free parking is attractive, and the city should not remove any of the free parking that is currently available. In the long term, eliminating free parking could deter residents and visitors from thinking of downtown as their first choice to shop and dine. Conversely, it could deter new businesses from considering downtown Evanston as a place to open a store or restaurant. While these changes may provide a short-term financial gain for the city, it will have long-term negative impacts on the business district of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bruce Ennebach, followed by Cecile McHugh, and then Elliot Zation.
Hi, this is Bruce Ennebach, 723 Emerson, addressing Agenda Item P2, which is 1900 Sherman Avenue. This project is no longer the same project which was previously approved by council. It is no longer a C-1A zoning project. Rather, it is now an R6 zoning project, which is the current zoning designation. By the county's own admission, and I quote, "The primary reason for the request to change to the zoning is that a planned development in a residential district requires a 12-foot separation between the buildings." So now, unquote, so now the reason for having asked for C-1A in the first place no longer exists. With the proposed change, there now is the appropriate separation between the buildings required under zoning, R6 zoning. The project additionally is not appropriately C-1A at all. To quote the city's webpage, "The C-1A commercial mixed-use district is intended to provide for the development of mixed-use buildings consisting of retail-oriented and office uses on the ground level, and office uses and residential dwellings located above. This project is not a mixed-use development and has no retail component. It is clearly not C-1A. It is R6. An R6 project with proposed changes accordingly must now be reconsidered under R6 zoning. Now structurally, this project is a potential disaster. Very importantly, the project has very significant foundation and structural challenges which need to be addressed not by the developer but by the city, by a qualified and independent structural engineering firm before any approval should be given. Now, I'm happy to have, and pleased to have the county develop affordable housing and happy to pay taxes for that activity. But this is not that. This project, rather, is primarily a market rate, luxury residential development, the likes of which the county has no business being involved in. Please send this proposal back for proper reevaluation, and thank you very much."
Thank you. The next speaker is Cecile McHugh, followed by Elliot Zation, and then Darlene Cannon.
Hi, this is Cecile McHugh. In today's packet, HAC requests extensions of times to obtain a building permit and to build. HAC's letter relates that last year, HAC discovered a structural condition that requires a 10- to 12-foot separation between the proposed new development and the permit. However, in the City Council packet last November, HAC said that their primary reason for the request to change the zoning was that a planned development in a residential district requires a 10- to 12-foot separation between buildings. HAC stated that the Emerson could not be built if a 10- to 12-foot separation between it and the permit was required. By now presenting a design for a building that is 10 to 12 feet for the permit, HAC proves that the primary reason they gave for asking for the zoning change was false, that stating that the zoning change was an absolute necessity was misinformation presented to the Plan Commission and to City Council. I am requesting that you vote against approving the extensions of time, causing this application to expire, and calling upon HAC to submit a new application based upon fact. In the letter, in today's packet, HAC goes on to say that in the wake of COVID and with the input from a new partner, HAC has also seen the need for bigger units and therefore increased the size of the units while reducing the common area and the number of parking places. HAC would then rely even more on off-site parking planned to have been leased from Link. However, Commissioner Rogers announced at the last Plan Commission meeting that the Link's owner requested a zoning analysis as a preliminary step to seeking approval for a tower on the abutting Sherman Gardens parking lot, I learned from public information. Commissioner Rogers stated his opinion that leasing off-site parking at the Link could not be relied upon, obviously the case. The only other option for off-site parking HAC has mentioned as a possibility is at E2. E2, however, is not within 1,000 feet of the Emerson, which seems to be required by the city and is certainly required to serve senior citizens at all, who because of their age rarely require onsite or abutting parking. If the buildings were to be separated, what are the specific changes to the visual design and operational use? I haven't seen them. I don't think I've missed them. I don't think they're available. There is a lot to talk about here. The request for extensions is made not simply from a need for more time due to unexpected delays. In addition to the zoning change which must be revisited, this project has changed significantly in the last year from both internal and external forces, and these changes need to be discussed in the context of a new application for a planned development. Please ensure that these conversations happen.
15 seconds.
I vote against HAC's request for extensions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Elliot Zation, followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Sue Golbach. Is Elliot Zation in the Zoom? If not, we'll move on to Darlene Cannon, followed by Sue Golbach, and then Win Graham. Is Darlene?
Yes, this is she, Darlene Cannon, Second Ward. Reclaim Evanston was disappointed that there was not a majority vote for the IGA. Reclaim thought the IGA was a critical element in the 5/50th and was, and we wonder why, after all the negotiations with the district and the apparent agreement, the council couldn't find a majority to approve it. We think the council should reconsider. Why would we be doing away with free parking on Sundays when it has proven to be detrimental to businesses downtown? In the past, and considering, and considering that we're still in the middle of COVID, and many, there are many empty storefronts downtown. The Emerson is a sham, sold as an affordable housing initially. The Emerson is a sham, sold as an affordable housing initially, then swapped out for luxury to serve the missing many. Many housing groups are out here campaigning for building, for the building and equity, and how it's going to help residents, but you don't make any kind of accommodations to be inclusive. But you get together during the day and present ideas and agendas that you feel is best to make sure, that makes you feel good. You make decisions on behalf of marginalized residents, and yet they never seem to get ahead. I strongly believe that if we're willing to spend seven million dollars on an animal shelter and not on owning housing units, that we should state that we should remove affordable housing from our city goals, because we're just being performative, because I hear what we say, but I also see what we do. Lastly, the budget of 2022 with, and with the creation of new staff positions and filling vacant positions, this year will be covered by ARPA funds. However, going forward, it will create a great burden to the residents for years to come. I'm asking that we not allow our interim city manager to handle this type of decision, and that, and this needs to be handled by a permanent seasoned city manager with years of experience in budgeting. We also need to forecast our budgeting for the next three to five years as other fiscally responsible municipalities do, and not do a year-to-year budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sue Lollbach, who will be followed by Wyn Graham, and then Tricia Connolly.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sue Lollbach. I work at Connections for the Homeless and head a coalition called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Several of those folks are on the phone and watching tonight. First, I would like to ask that the council approve P2 tonight. A request for more time to finish detailed plans before requesting a building permit is a very routine matter, and it's reasonable to allow the Housing Authority of Cook County to make adjustments as it progresses with the development and needs to adapt to new information. Please do not let ongoing objections and new barriers from a few neighbors of the buildings stall this project. I would also like to speak briefly about some concerns that are just starting to mount about the direction of the South Boulevard housing development, as the city remains silent about what developers have responded to the request for proposal. While it's within the city's purview to manage the process and take as long as they need to, rumors are flying right now that the direction the committee is moving is to favor a mixed-income building that includes units that will rent at market rate or above. Joining Forces believes that this is an unacceptable use of city-owned property, and that if the city really holds increased affordability to be one of its goals, the South Boulevard parking lot should be used for housing that is solely for low-income and moderate-income households. As I said, rumors are flying. We would like to not be speculating, and we encourage the city to quickly disclose who has responded to the request for proposal, what they have proposed, and how the city is making its decision. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wyn Graham, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Dorian Price.
I have no further statement. I am here to support the statement of Sue Lollbach in support for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Tricia Connolly, followed by Dorian Price.
Hello, Tricia Connolly, second ward. One thing I do want to say, Mayor Bis, and whoever else needs to get clarity on this, when I signed up for public comment, I'm seconding what Mary Rosinsky mentioned. It was very unclear that the budget hearing would be a separate opportunity to comment, so, you know, I guess I just hope, so that's that. That's information you can use to revise the public. I will first say, I think, as elected officials, I think you should really question this planned development at 1900 Sherman. I think it is an absolute travesty that Cook County Housing, as well as the City of Evanston, did not question this at all for what it is, which is primarily luxury development on our public land. How can we make a claim that we care about housing affordability? And go ahead and, you know, let something like this slide through. I know it's a done deal now. Now we're trying to like figure out zoning and all these changes they want to do, but it's absurd. I hope you, each one of you can reflect on this, how absurd it is that there is public land that is primarily going to be sold off to private entities, and you know, that's what they do, so good for them. Shame on us, shame on us. We need to do better. In consideration of Evanston residents, I'm asking tonight to please slow down on the approval of the 2022 budget. Recognizing that every city council meeting, there are endless items, which is not great for all of you, nor is it great for all of us, the proposed budget is an important document that requires the sharing of essential information that's going to impact everyone in the next several years. The impacts of COVID are not gone. We need to be financially considerate of this and not spend without a clear plan of what that's going to mean the next few years. I also believe that it is not okay to go ahead and be just fine and dandy with a tax increase when we're not clear of a major event such as COVID, and we're not out of the weeds yet with it, and how that's going to impact our community in the next couple of years. So please, do it, slow it down. There is not a hurry here.
Fifteen seconds.
As our mayor and city council, I'm going to ask to be clear on what our priorities are in this budget. Do you know what they are? The residents need to know this. We really need, Mayor Bis, for you to step it up and hold a budget town hall. Anything less is a message that it's up to us, the residents, to mobilize people and get them here to these meetings. And sadly, in this meeting, there's not a whole lot of us here. There should be more, and I'm putting that on the City of Evanston, not on us. Please, give projections of what the impact of filling 49 positions plus many more new positions that are on the ballot here. Please question why interim staff are responsible for hiring long-term employees. Remember the concern about workplace culture and morale? This should not be done in departments where we can wait till permanently employed managers are put in place in those departments. Why are we not continuing to be hiring? Okay, I'm as done as I can be.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dorian Price, who will be followed by Angela Schaefer. Ms. Price, are you there? Yep.
Oh, sorry, yes. Hi, I'm Dorian Price, Anne Rebby, and would like to say good evening to you all, and it was a beautiful day for sure. In terms of not rushing, actually, the weather kind of reminds us that there are times when we should savor and learn from what's going on around us, and when somebody's traumatized or rushing or meeting demands that don't coincide with how they feel about things, you get a sense of dysfunction in our community that's not, that can be avoidable. And as you know, I think that trauma is something, as well as others, that needs to be addressed, and a public health facility is really badly needed. There's no vision or such that I have seen, and I apologize if I missed it, in terms of what to do with Health and Human Services, except to bring in more contact tracers. Given the nature of the lack of help that was available to people who did qualify, to clarify this, if there's any misunderstanding, there are people who qualified and could not get help and still can't get help. So we need to put that as a priority, and when you're talking about saving $3 million over three years out of a $60 million budget, do you realize personal budgets are far, far more precarious than that? And so that has to be taken into consideration, and residents keep saying it over and over and over again, in different ways, we have different styles, we have perhaps different views of how to do it, but the outcome is the same. The city manager currently has an outlook or outcomes that are very close to what's gone before, and what's gone before is what people have said they would like to have changed, or at least some version of what had before with a little bit of a twist that helps with the guard to community unification and proceeding with projects in such a way that, like what Biden does for the country, is start with the middle, and then when the middle's not enough, has to push a little harder for change. And we need that kind of leadership, and I think Mayor Bis really wants to do that. I've yet to see it happen, though, in terms of what I feel as a resident coming back down to me. Going up from the resident to the city council is what everyone else has been asking for, including me, because there's things you miss that even the best, the best organizations, and I'm talking about, I've been associated with the best organizations, can't completely comprehend and want input from people who have been disenfranchised in a way. It's kind of hard to get a confidence or trust, which has been mentioned before by, yeah, which, thank you both very much, which has been mentioned by Anya with regard to D65. That IGA is one of the most important documents that you could be signing, regardless of whether or not we have a TIF or not. Right now, there is no document defining that commitment to helping people that I know of, so I'm asking to you to continue to amplify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Angela Schaefer. Is Angela in the Zoom?
Yes, I am. Can you see me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bis and the council, for allowing me to speak this evening. I am the new executive director for the Central Street Business District, and I would like to draw attention to Independence Park. It is on the list for renovations, and the reason I am bringing attention is because we are currently at a place where the park has been deemed unsafe for the community. The concerns have been brought to my attention that we currently have cracked slides that are boarded up where kids can't play on them, there's metal jutting out underneath of the old plastic, the sandboxes now basically wood chips, and they're covered with, you know, dirt, and they really only cover a third of the playground now. I know this is on the list for renovations, but I highly encourage us to consider it for the 2022 budget, possibly moving up some of these renovations. It is our main gathering place for the community, and it's an amenity for all the families in the area who do gather. They congregate on the weekends, they spend money in our district, and moms gather during the day, and it's just a really great opportunity to consider spending in our district and improving the vibrancy of the community overall. So I thank you for this time, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention that we consider it and move it up the list for renovations, at least discussion or planning for 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The three people who were called on and didn't answer are Jeremy Johnson, Bob Guazda, and Elliot Zation. Are any of the three of you now available to speak?
I am, Elliot Zation.
Go ahead.
Having read the budget transmittal letter from interim city manager Ganderski, I am well aware of the challenge that any resident, including members of the council, faces in trying to evaluate the budget for 2022. As I understand the letter, the 2022 proposed budget is substantially greater than the 2021 budget, due in large part to expenditures related to the ARPA program. However, because of ARPA funding and some other increases in revenue, the 2022 budget apparently does not include more than a very small tax increase. What is less clear to me is how the expenditures that are projected for 2022 and seem likely to continue into subsequent years, for example, creating new staff positions and filling vacant positions, that how these will be covered in the future, once the ARPA funds are fully expended. Apparently, other municipalities, including our neighbor Skokie, require budget projections into the future for several years as part of their budget planning. Evanston does not make use of these procedures, and I would like to know what is the city's rationale. Obviously, the pandemic has had a major impact on our local economy and the kinds of business-related revenues the city can expect, but it's not clear that easing of the pandemic will necessarily ease the city's budget situation, especially for the long term. We know that Evanston property taxes are high and are disincentive to prospective residents and a burden for many current residents, especially people of color and persons on fixed incomes. So I would urge the council not to be in a major hurry to get through the budget approval. The legal deadline is more than a month away, and in the interim, it would be helpful for the council to examine projections extending at least five years. And I would urge the council not to be in a hurry to commit to new hires and refilling vacant positions proposed by an interim city manager who will not be responsible for them, but it may well illimit the flexibility of the new city manager when that person assumes the position. I hope we'll hear perhaps tonight about progress being made in the city manager search. I hope that the council will hire somebody who has extensive experience with municipal budgets and knows how to evaluate the productivity of staff and the necessity for certain levels of staffing. For some residents, a tax increase will not alter their ability to remain here, but we shouldn't assume that that is true of most residents. Thank you for listening to me. I realize that there have been budget presentations, but it appears to me that more public consideration is feasible and could help reassure residents that Evanston City Government is an efficient and effective entity, making the best use of our taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The other two individuals who were called on are Jeremy Johnson and Bob Guazda. Is either one of them available to make public comment? Jeremy Johnson or Bob Guazda? Seeing that they are not here, that concludes this evening's public comment. Before we go on, Clerk Mendoza has one additional item to share with us.
Hi, I wanted to read a letter we got from our Washington School Elementary, third grade, two-way immersion, two E-class, and it goes, "Dear City Council members, hi, we are third-grade students from Washington Elementary School. These past few weeks, we have been learning about the history of the beaches in Evanston. As Evanston residents, we wanted to share how we felt about this so we could help improve the outcome for further generations. When we learned more about how the beaches in Evanston were not accessible to all people, every day we felt upset. We believe beaches in Evanston should be free to all people all of the time. One reason we think that beaches in Evanston should be accessible for everyone is that the beach passes have had a racist history. And if Evanston wants to be an anti-racist town, we shouldn't have the tokens. This was for segregation. The fact that it is still around could be very offensive, and some people couldn't afford it. The beaches should be free for everyone, not only Evanston residents. Let's say you went to the beach with your friends, but your friends are from Chicago, they would still have to pay. It would be a lot easier if neither you or your friends needed to pay. We don't have tokens at James Park, so why are there tokens at the beach? The beach tokens were designed as a temporary solution to keep the beaches clean, but now we can find different ways to pay to keep the beaches clean. You should go back to Councilmember Devon Reed's amendment and vote on it because you never actually voted on it. Don't judge people by their race, and in the end, we all have feelings. That is why we want the beaches in Evanston to be free for everyone seven days a week. Sincerely, that third-grade weak class at Washington Elementary School. Thank you."
Thank you. That brings us now to special orders of business, beginning with Item SP1. Would anyone care to make a motion on Item SP1? Councilmember Braithwaite moves passage of Item SP1. Councilmember Braithwaite moves passage of item SP1, the 2022 Budget Ordinance. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Kelly, followed by Fleming.
So first, I want to thank Kate Louis-Laken for, I know you all put together, I think, a three-year projection that we'll see. Is that right? So thank you. Thank you so much. I think that, I think it's really important to see that, and I'm grateful for that, and also thank you for talking with residents in the first word. It's so, I mean, I think it's just so important that all our residents are really engaged and start to get a better grasp on what the budget means, so thank you. So I guess, I think that's, this is what I think is important to see before we discuss any of these.
Sure. So this, actually, this presentation has a bit more in it than just that, but it does include those projections that's discussed. So we prepared one presentation that's about 10 slides, just that includes actually all of the budget items that are on tonight's agenda, so just to kind of go over and make sure everyone's clear on how these all interact with each other and what the items are. I forget where to point this to change.
Yeah, I mean, just as a way of sort of conversational navigation, I would, obviously, again, as I always say, I don't get a vote, but I would hope that all of these items wind up treated in the same way. I don't think it will benefit anybody if we pass some and not others. And so I think if we want to broaden out this discussion, so it may bleed into some of the other items beyond SP1, I think that will probably give people a better sense of whether they're prepared to vote than if we narrowly talked only about SP1 and ignored the others.
Yeah, and SP1 is the budget ordinance, and of course, the tax levies feed into the budget. So yes, I think that's a sort of a wise approach to all of these. So the first, again, SP1 is the budget ordinance. This is on for introduction. This is the one official ordinance that passes the 2022 budget. It is at the fund level, so the full document that you all have seen is what backs up that ordinance, but that ordinance is what gets passed by the city council. The following items are tax levy ordinances. So the city passes three different tax levies to support our own operations through all of our funds that are in the city's budget, and then there are also ordinances for the special service area tax levies that are separate. And then we have a set of debt service abatement resolutions, which I've got a slide to go into a little bit more detail on what those mean and how that works. So the budget ordinance is, again, the first item. This includes a revised budget ordinance amount of $360 million, $433,520. I'm sorry, this did not change. There we go. The memo in the council packet today highlighted what changes have been made in December compared to the proposed budget that came out in early October. General Fund, I'm going to touch on in a moment. This slide then has sort of four other funds that got increased a little bit, so I just wanted to highlight those and make sure this is clear. The Crown Construction Fund, with more information as we're further on in the year, there are some contracts for that construction project that are still being paid out. So to account that some of those will continue into 2022, we've increased the budget in that fund. It's not about increasing the budget for the project at all, it's just about the timing of when those will be paid. Water Fund, a few corrections to personnel costs, increased costs for some chemicals and maintenance. Solid Waste Fund, again, a few corrections in a few lines, as well as now known contract costs for waste disposal. And then the Equipment Replacement Fund, we added the anticipated purchase of the new fire engine. This has an expected funding source, but if that funding source does not come through, we would not be making that purchase, so. To further discuss the general fund, the changes that were made on the revenue side is an increase of 2.6 million. The bulk of this is ARPA funding. Yes, the bulk of the increase there is ARPA funding. There is a decrease also due to adding in the free beaches decision for Evanston residents, which was a decrease of 650,000. A couple other smaller amounts are adding in the crossing guard reimbursement that's discussed last week, adding in vital records revenue, and then revising some of our revenue projections. We're a month further into the year than when the proposed budget came out, and we were able to increase a few of our projections there. On the expense side... I seem to have lost a slide in there somehow. But on the expense side, the items are, let me just double-check that. Sorry about that. So the expenses include some new positions that, again, we discussed a full list of new positions in the proposed budget, and that's what the next slide has some detail on. The other changes are just adding in those one-time expenses that have been discussed, which are permit software and the comprehensive and strategic plan, adding in crossing guards for a half year as discussed last week, and then a few other just corrections and again changes from the proposed budget now that we have more information. So the position changes was that 22, I'm sorry, 20 new positions were initially in the proposed budget. This list today reduces it down to 11 FTE. So these are the positions that we are proposing to move forward with.
And can I just chime in? These were the positions that we put, stayed, left in, given council's feedback last time, and then Ms. Louis-Laken will inform you that the rest of the positions, we have an option if council were to accept this option, which would be to come back sometime in June or July of next year to see how our revenue is doing, and then make a motion to, or make an amendment to add those positions back in, or just leave it as is for the year 2022. So I just wanted to make that note.
Yes. And again, to clarify that the 29 positions that were held vacant in 2021 are sort of already built in. This is, again, contemplating those 20 positions that were proposed in addition to those. So based on the feedback we received from council in previous meetings, we focused on a few of the positions that are required at Crown, positions at the service desk, as well as a few other positions internally that we think are the most important to move forward with. So here are a couple slides now on where this puts our general fund going forward. So just a few notes about the assumptions we made for these projections. So we built it out as no increase in property tax levy. We put 3% increases on annually in other taxes and license revenue. This is a pretty typical increase we see just sort of over the course of a year. Inflation, not changing any rates, that's assuming. Fines and charges for services, we return to 2019 levels by 2023. We're still budgeting those quite a bit below 2019 and 22, expecting that they haven't quite bounced back yet from the pandemic. We see about a 3% growth for all major expenses. That's typical for what we see on salaries, health insurance, et cetera. We do not know what those personnel expenses increases will necessarily be, as that is all of the contracts with unions are ending at the end of 2022. So that is up for council decision at some point. And then finally, we removed our pension contributions that go through the general fund from this analysis. So this is general fund operating only. Pension contributions are determined through an actuarial process, and usually a levy is directly for those, so. Where that shakes out is that our annual projected deficits in 2023, with those 11 new positions now being put forward, added, we land at 2.7 million deficit. 2024, it's 2.9 million deficit, and 2025, it's a 3.1 million deficit. You can see the numbers corresponding if those new positions were not added. So of course, it is a, it's a difference of about $900,000 to $1 million each year, which we can, you know, understand and assume, given that's the current year cost of those positions. The options for funding these deficits in the future will be, you know, the options we typically face when we are looking at the city's budget, that does not, of course, include ARPA into the future. We expect we may be able to have additional use of the fund balance again in '23 or beyond. We see that there will be a higher surplus possibly in 2021 than was currently projected. Increase in general fund property tax revenue, of course, is another way to solve these deficits. And then finally, an increase to tax rates, fees, and other license costs can be considered in the future.
Well, there's a fourth option, too. You can decrease city services and save money that way. That's not a desirable option, but that's also an option.
Correct. Yes. This, again, is the city's property tax levy. This has not changed from the initially proposed budget, and this is not an increase over last year's property tax levy. We are showing an increase, again, in the general fund, and then there's our corresponding decreases in the debt service and the pension levies for next year. And then I've also put on just a corresponding of which ordinance goes with which levy, because, again, it's a little more confusing when we get down to sort of the legal ordinances than we would expect. This is just a quick note on our special service area tax levies. So there are four separate items for these tax levies on the agenda tonight. The city levies property taxes on behalf of the SSAs. We collect the SSAs, I'm sorry, the property tax levy into the city, and then it gets distributed back out to the SSAs for their purposes in managing that special service area. And then these are the four ordinances, again, and the special service areas they correspond to. And then finally, just one slide on the abatement resolution. So this is something we ask the city to, the city council passes every year. So our debt service levy does not work like all of the other ones. We don't pass an ordinance with a number. We actually, Cook County, anytime that we issue a general obligation bond, Cook County will automatically levy for the total debt service of that bond. So we instead say, please don't levy for this amount, whatever we choose to abate as a city. Those numbers are determined, you know, when we pass the bonds, usually. In 2022, our debt service, our total debt service on GO bonds is 18.5 million. We're abating 4.6 million of it, so that leaves us with a net debt service tax levy of 13.9 million. And our sources of abatement are coming from the water funds, who are fund, TIP funds, and et cetera. And that is all of the slides, but these can be pulled up again for discussion as we go along.
Thank you very much. And just as a practical matter, I think Councilmember Kelly still has the floor. Did you want to follow, continue?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Kate. So on the three-year projection slide, so I think we know minimally, right, if we talk about those 11 positions. And I think, you know, when cities, like I've been, conversation with Skokie a little bit, who do like a 10-year projection out based on some ideas as to what, where salaries might be, I think we should, because that means without the 11 proposed ones, right? So it seems to me we should at least put, like minimally, what we expect that to cost. There's no reason not to include that in there. Correct, or?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm just trying to understand why it says without, why wouldn't, I mean, why don't we have a column with those 11 positions also?
That is what, the 2.7?
I'm sorry.
The higher numbers? Yeah.
Okay, got you. Pardon me.
That's a little confusing, but that first set of numbers is including those positions, and then we pulled it out just to show the difference.
Apologize. Okay. And how many of the positions held vacant, were held vacant, not just last year, but some have been held vacant, right, for several years?
Some had been held vacant. I don't know that number off the top of my head. I believe by the 20, by the 2020 budget, though, it was only a few in the police department, and I think two in the fire department. It was not very many across all of our operating departments.
So a handful.
Yes, yeah. The numbers that are coming to mind are four in the police department and two in fire.
I think I can confirm that, because I don't recall there being that many positions once the pandemic hit. There was a freeze, and then there was no new hires.
Correct. Yep.
Yep.
Next is Councilmember Fleming, followed by Nusma.
All right, thank you. So we have to pass the budget by December 15th, is that somewhere around there? Is that correct, city manager? Okay. And I know in years past, we've, I think, tried to get it done before the holiday. I guess my concern is, I just feel like there's so many more questions, and every year this happens, where we have these very long meetings, and we can't get to all the questions, and we kind of postpone it, and then we have a long meeting again. So I have some questions, but I guess, honestly, I understand it's 8 o'clock, and we have several other big things. I've just still, I'm not super comfortable moving this forward, even I know this is for introduction, just as a matter of like timeliness and legal matters. But I just feel like there's still so much to discuss about the budget that I don't know when we're going to get to, given just how our meetings continue to go. So I'm a little bit lost as to what to do. I mean, I would like to not do all this tonight, except for, unless the city manager can give me an idea what the next agendas are looking like. I feel like we're just going to be here again in two weeks, so I don't want to kind of go in a circle. But Kate, I did have a budget memo that I don't think I've made yet, and maybe you can tell me if it's, when it's coming. It was about the SRO cost at the high school, and I know we've had that in years past. I think the last time I looked, it was around $250,000, maybe for the two, if I remember correctly, because I would love to have a discussion about us not paying for that, particularly given the staffing that we are short at the, you know, in our regular EPD, and the ongoing conversations we've had about policing in schools, you know, regardless of where people fall on that philosophical discussion. I would like to see the high school, you know, cover that cost, if that is a cost and service they want to have. We realized that several years ago, police were taken out of the building at 65, and it seems to be that that's still, you know, they still are getting the service they need, and it's still functioning. And I, you know, I think we're down 11 officers, if I remember correctly, and we're also paying for two officers to be in our school building. So I would love to have that conversation, whether you have the memo or not. I think 250 was about the cost of that, to see if we can move either 202 to cover that cost, or share that cost, or just have those officers back on the street and responding to calls at 202 as necessary.
Thank you. I actually did not have that budget memo request, so I have referred it now, and I will make sure it should be able to get done this week.
Okay. All right. Well, regardless of the exact number, I think, you know, the principle of the conversation I would like to have, if we can have that now, or I can put that on the table for us to have whenever we're talking about other stuff, but I would, I would love to not cover that cost anymore and have those officers back out to responding to our residents as needed.
And to answer your previous question, I mean, the way I see it, if we want to, if we want to pass the budget without really pushing the envelope on timing, I think it's, I would recommend people feeling ready to take at least a first vote two weeks from today. If folks don't feel ready today, I think, you know, if we don't vote on the 22nd, then we're really running into some pretty complex time crunches. So I would say, there's nothing more important than this, and so if, making sure that both the budget itself and also our own kind of discussion about it are at the place that we need them to be to have a vote two weeks from now, requires more discussion tonight. We ought to have that discussion tonight. I think that takes precedence over other items. Alternatively, if folks want to make questions in writing and share them with the staff, and then have the answers published on our website for the public to see, that's another way to do it. But one way or another, I would, I would ask that folks make sure that all their questions are aired in time to be ready to vote up or down two weeks from today.
One is, I guess, for me, the questions part, but then also, like, there's a discussion, right? So we have all these budget memos that I didn't request, but I don't know which ones people want to have a discussion on that might also not, like, that's not on the agenda, not accounted for in the time, right? And so I don't make the agenda, but the agendas continue to be very full, despite us needing to talk about the budget and ARPA. And so, again, just kind of concerned when we're going to have the brain capacity to do that, if every meeting has very full agendas. And then the other question I just wanted to ask, Kate, you had it up on the slide about crossing guards. I know we talked about giving direction for that. Has everybody updated in terms of a shared cost for that, for crossing guards? I think it was on there as $57,000 or something on one of your slides.
Yeah, so what we built into this revised budget, that again, is what feeds into the budget ordinance, was a half-year cost for providing the crossing guards to all the schools and building in the reimbursements we are currently getting, just as revenue. So that's just from the two private schools that are giving us reimbursements, just to, again, build in that reality going forward. It does not include additional reimbursements that we would expect to get.
Okay. All right, so is anyone interested in having a conversation about the SROs, or how do we handle that, Mr. Mayor?
I think that if, I think folks should, I think we should have the conversations we want to have tonight. I don't think we should wait for another time. So I mean, at this point, those requests... So, I mean, at this point, those requesting, seeking recognition who have not yet spoken are Councilmember Nusma and Reed. But I would say, you know, anybody should add an item to the list of things they really want to have a back and forth on this evening, and we should, we should do that. So Councilmember Nusma, followed by Reed, followed by Revel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, on the topic of the SROs, I would support not only withdrawing the funding, but withdrawing the officers from ETHS, redeploying those officers in other positions. That's not a headcount reduction, it's redeploying of resources. So I'm open to having that debate whenever, but, you know, just for the record, I'm in favor of no longer supporting SROs. And what else do I have? I just want to say thank you to the staff, to Kate.
Let me just quickly, I'm sorry to, but just to, there's, there's a policy question and a budget question.
Right.
And they're both really important, but keeping the same headcount and redeploying out of the building is actually not really a budget question. Right? The budget options are, the budget changes would be either shave the headcount or demand compensation from ETHS.
I believe they, there is an agreement in place for them to pay us for.
For ETHS to pay us? We've never had that information before, so can you enlighten us?
I have to double check, but I believe that we have, it was one of the, it was a request from someone, and I believe the media, it was a FOIA request for any sort of MOUs we had with respect to school resource officers. So I believe we have an MOU in place for ETHS, but I have to double check.
I think we have.
We'll look into that, but go ahead, Councilmember.
All right. So if it's not a budget discussion, it's not appropriate for this evening, but, yeah, it will be necessary.
Well, mine was a budget discussion. I don't want to pay for them.
And I don't want to have them.
Yeah. So if you can find the MOU, that would be great. And also, the most recent MOU is 65, that we can revisit as well.
Yeah. So Kate and Hattash, thank you for walking us through this process. You guys have vastly more experience than I do with it, so this has been informative for me. I also wanted to note that we have a new fund, number 178, the Sustainability Fund. Yay for that. Zero dollars in it at the moment, but we'll solve that problem going forward. Looking forward to working on that. Question on the, on the headcount and the positions, if you could go to that slide, Kate. How did we get down from the original proposal, which was, by my count, 19 and 1/4 FTE, to 10 and 1/4 FTE? How did you make those decisions?
Because you all directed us to.
Right. But how did you, we didn't say this one, this one, and this one.
We took from the conversation that having maintenance at Robert Crown and adequate lake, lakefront coverage was important, as well as the permit desk was where we get the most complaints across council. And then in order to continue hiring even the vacant positions and keeping up with that, which we're behind in, and maintaining adequate levels for human resources, we do need a human resource specialist. And the deputy city clerk comes out of the city, the Clark budget.
So not included in the current proposal are several positions in Public Works and the forestry department, so.
That's right, because that, a lot of those were dependent upon the tree ordinance passing.
Right. And that's coming.
Well, if it comes, then what my suggestion to Acting Director Keno was to ask for a position in that ordinance if it passes.
So we might be adding forestry positions back in later in the year. You, Kate mentioned this earlier.
Right. I think what I mentioned earlier was that this, this we whittled down to what we could, given the direction we had last time. We could theoretically come back halfway next year and say, how are we actually doing with revenue and loss? And should we reexamine adding, adding the rest of those positions back in, in an amendment?
Okay. I would definitely be open to doing that if we can afford it at that time. That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Revel.
Thank you. So I, I really think that we should hold off on many of the positions that are requested here. I think we need to narrow this list down even more to essential positions. You know, I think, you know, while I don't necessarily agree with some of the tenor and the tone of some of the comments from public comment, I think, you know, Kelly or Manager Ganderzki is perfectly, you know, is perfectly capable, but I do think, what I do agree with is that we should, you know, allow for our permanent city manager, whoever it might be, to make these, you know, this kind of, these kinds of decisions, which will have a long-term budget impact, in particular since we don't, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily reassuring to say, hey, our projections indicate that, you know, regardless of whether or not we had these positions, we're looking at having to come up with several million dollars a year in additional revenue, which will hit in the next few years. And so, you know, and then, then you factor in all of these new positions, and, you know, it seems like it balloons from, you know, 2 million to potentially, you know, 3, 4, 3 or 4 million. And that is not an insignificant amount of money, particularly given some of our other constraints. And so, while I'm sure all these positions are necessary, I just think we have to have a stronger, long-term plan on how to deal with the finances. And I think for almost all of these positions, save for a select few, my preference would be that we come back, as Manager Ganderzki has proposed, we come back mid-year and evaluate the need for a number of the positions. To the SRO discussion, you know, I made a referral on that as well, so I'm supportive. I mean, I guess it really is a policy discussion, because we're not necessarily saying that we're going to remove the two officers from the budget, so certainly discussion saved, maybe best saved for another time. And then I have a few other things I want to jump back to, but I will allow other folks to go. I have some questions relating to the parking fund, really relating to street resurfacing and parking fund, but I'll get to those questions if there are other folks that seem more relevant to what we've been discussing.
Next is Councilmember Revel.
Well, given the interest in seeing if we can further reduce the number of new positions that we're planning to put into the budget, I unfortunately am going to ask us to veer in the other direction, because this evening, we're going to be giving our final approval to revisions to our leaf blower policy. And we know from just our existing policy that a really huge problem has been enforcement of the leaf blower ordinance. So I don't think it does as much good to pass a stronger leaf blower ordinance that moves us further and, you know, closer and closer to our CARP goals, if we're not also going to have a mechanism for enforcing the leaf blower policy. So I've been engaged in some back and forth with our interim city manager about, you know, just where, where that position should be. There have been suggestions that it could be in the parking division, but it's seeming, for complicated reasons that I'm sure our interim city manager can explain, that what we really have to, what, what is needed is another staff person in our environment, another environmental health inspector. And so this person would be dedicated to enforcing the leaf blower policy, also helping with the big educational effort that's going to be needed to help with compliance, not only education of our landscape contractors, but also homeowners and other property owners as to the benefits of reducing gas and propane-powered leaf blowers, and moving more and more towards more natural habitat kind of gardens in their, at their homes. So I'm, I don't know what the, do I need to make a motion, or do I just ask staff to work on this, or what? Because I don't know exactly what the dollar amount would be.
I mean, it would be theoretically in order to make a motion amending the budget, but I would recommend against that. I would, I would ask staff to come back in advance of the 22nd meeting with recommendations about what that would look like.
Okay. And I do have another.
Just point of information, if I may.
Is this a question for Councilmember Revel?
For, well, both of you, I guess, based on your ruling just then about, about a motion.
Mm-hmm.
So I wonder why we wouldn't make formal motions to just, you know, in, in that case, any member of the council could just say, hey, here's, you know, I've got some ideas that we'd like to see, and if staff is just going to put it into the budget, you know, I think we should just gauge whether, and again, this is something I think they're support for, and I would suspect, I know they're support for, but just as a procedural thing, when the next person has an idea that has a budget impact, I don't know if we should...
Yeah. Let me clarify my, my reaction to Councilmember Revel. My advice wasn't to decline, to make a motion, because if you do that, whatever you want will wind up in the budget. My advice was, she indicated she wasn't sure exactly what the cost was, or precisely what it would look like, and rather than do it as sort of approximate or sloppy motion, have staff prepare a recommendation of exactly what it would take, which then the council can, can vote on. If you want to first take the temperature of whether people are kind of open to this in the first place, so that we don't waste staff's time, if there's no support at all, I'm certainly happy to do that.
No, my apologies.
But making a precise motion, we don't know the, the dollar number, is a little bit cart before the horse.
Thank you for the clarification.
And then I did have a second budget amendment, and this is not for the general fund, but rather for the capital improvements fund. We heard earlier during public comment about the condition of the park, of Independence Park on Central Street, and it is currently in our five-year capital improvements plan, scheduled for renovation in 2023. But prior to doing the renovation project itself, there's an extensive series of meetings that, that need to be held with neighbors around the park to gather input about what, what kind of features and design they would like to see in the park. And so that take, it takes several months. And so what I am proposing is that we amend the 2022 capital improvements plan to add in consulting services that, in 2022, that would do this planning and design process, so that we'd be ready to go in 2023 with the actual renovation project itself. And I'm basing that on my experience recently with McCullough Park renovation, where we had a series of meetings one year, and then the project was ready for renovation when we got to the, the next budget year. So I actually have an actual, a number on this one. Let me just think here. So I, this one, I would be happy to make a motion. I move to amend the 2022 capital improvements plan to add consulting services for the renovation of Independence Park for $90,000.
So Councilmember Revel moves to amend the capital improvements plan by adding $90,000 to something. And I'm going to ask you to, while we discuss it, I'll ask you to put that in writing and email it over, as usual. Councilmember Nguyen seconds on this item.
And I guess I would just add that I learn, understand from staff that they're very likely to be savings in other areas of the 2022 capital improvement projects that will offset the cost of this, because the, the, the capital improvements fund is, for 2022, is scheduled at 16 million, at $455,000 total. So the whole, the expectation is there'd be money in that to cover that.
Councilmember Fleming?
I appreciate your advocacy, and I know the park, because I get coffee over there, but I would strongly oppose that. And I will say, because when we got this park scorecard, which I just pulled up from, I don't know how many years ago, the rationale, at least as I understood it, was we got this scorecard, all parks were reviewed, and then they were categorized by, you know, D, F, C, you know, so on and so forth. And Mr. Hemingway can address this, but I've always been told that we're, you know, repairing parks based on, you know, this criteria, so which ones are, I guess, in the worst shape. And I will say that, because I've had several parks on this list that are Ds, but, you know, because we don't repair that many parks at one time, and I want to be fiscally responsible, I've tried to kind of wait my turn. And so if we're just going to, you know, if we're just going to throw parks up because our residents have brought it to our, and I know you're doing more than that, but I just, I think we're getting out of order here, and this is kind of my ongoing concern with sometimes how decisions are made, that we're, there's, like, what is the criteria we're using? So I know we use a lot of money at, I guess, McCullough Park, and there were residents who said they didn't need that much, and I don't remember what the final dollar amount being, ended up being, but again, I have parks on this list, that have been on this list since I became in this ward, and I've always told my residents, based on the limited funding we have, we repair parks based on, you know, the hazard that they pose. And so unless this park was one that was already high on the list when we did this listing, maybe Mr. Hemingway can speak to this, I just don't see why we would throw it in front of a bunch of other parks that have been kind of waiting patiently to be repaired. Are we still using the park scorecard, Mr. Hemingway?
Yes. Councilmember Fleming, it is one of the criterias that's used, but in this current case of Independence Park, and in other parks, they have become safety issues for the public to use. There has been pieces of the current playscape at Independence Park that has been removed because it has become unsafe. The Public Works staff consistently do our playground inspections, and as they do those playground inspections, we get those reports and review those reports, and there are sometimes recommendations that come back that say, hey, this particular playscape at this particular park is no longer safe. And so either it, the playground itself, or the playscape itself needs to be taken out of order, or completely out of order for use, or if it's the slide and the rest of the playscape is usable, they'll take the slide out. So it has come to our attention that this particular park, the playscape, is no longer safe and dangerous for use.
And so are you putting other parks also on the list for that, or is that removing other parks that would have been repaired this year, because they are not considered as dangerous?
Well, this one came to our attention, and the decision, working with, you know, the Capitol team, was to try to, you know, keep as many of our playgrounds in the pipeline for repair. And, you know, yes, the scorecard is still referred to, but sometime, you know, Mother Nature happens, and, and other ones become higher priority than when that was done in 2016.
Okay. So then, this is, I guess, not a budget memo, but if you can go through the parks in the ninth ward, and tell me where they are on the list, now that we've adjusted the list, that would be helpful.
I'll do that.
Point of information, just based on something that Dr. Mr. Hemingway, I was called Dr. Hemingway, Director Hemingway just said, so is that park out of operation? Is this park that we're discussing, that Alderman, the Councilmember Revel was discussing, shut down, or is the equipment removed?
Yeah. Part of the equipment has already been removed, and I believe the remaining portion has to, you know, be removed for safety purposes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Revel's proposed amendment? Councilmember Burns.
I mentioned Perry Park also on Hovland. Perry Park also has equipment that has been removed, and there's some remaining, I think, metal pieces that could cause injury. So I want to second what Councilmember Fleming mentioned, that I'd love to, for us to do another pass of the parks in the fifth ward as well, one which isn't even somehow coming up on the map, which is a little interesting, but on the dead end of Dewey, there's another park that's in pretty bad shape, in Twigs Park. But we could talk more about that offline. I just wanted to second her, her inquiry.
Will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Similar question with fourth ward parks. You know, we've got Laramore Park, which was on the list to have the shelter replaced, and Fitzsimmons Park, where there's some equipment that needs to be dealt with. So if, if there's a domino effect here, I think we need to take that into account before we make any decisions.
I think I'm going to ask Director Hemingway, based on this new information, to reprioritize all of the parks in every ward. all of the parks in every ward, based on what we've learned about Independence Park, and see where everything else falls in the priority based on your scoring system or the capital, in the capital improvement queue, where everything is, because I think everyone's going to ask about their ward.
You got it. Thanks.
And I think that just, if I can just finish this up, I mean.
Let me, so you've already spoken on this, so Councilmember Revel is asking to speak, and then we'll go back to you.
Well, I just wanted to mention again, because I think I did mention it earlier, that this Independence Park is already scheduled in the capital improvements plan for renovation in 2023, and the only portion that I'm asking to have done in 2022 is the design phase.
Councilmember Fleming? All right, no one else is asking to speak on the amendment, so would the clerk please call the roll on Councilmember Revel's amendment, which I will, oh, sorry, Councilmember Kelly?
So can you just reiterate the expense, what we're?
Yeah, I was just about to do that, actually.
Okay.
So the amendment is to change the 2022 capital improvements plan to add $90,000 for consulting services for renovation of Independence Park. Councilmember Kelly?
And that would have been, that was going to be allocated in '23, so you're moving it forward, is the idea?
It, well, my understanding is that it normally would have been done in 2023 as part of the renovation itself, but if we did the planning in 2023, I'm not quite, I'm not sure whether the renovation itself would then be able to take place that year, because it takes time to do that, the back and forth meetings with the community.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye. Oh, sorry, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming, Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
With eight voting against and one, no, no, she got him, he voted aye. With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the budget has been amended. So just to, so we're back on talking about the budget, and just to sort of recap, some issues that have been raised have been the SRO issue, as well as the issue raised about the, in fact, what's on the screen in front of us, the proposed new staff positions. So those are two items that I think still have some unresolved, are still unresolved. At this time, no one who has not yet spoken is asking to speak, so we'll go to those who have already spoken once, beginning with Councilmember Kelly, who has three minutes and 40 seconds left.
Okay, which one are we, which one do you want to proceed on first? SROs or new positions?
As you prefer.
Okay. So on the SROs, can we, of the, I forgot what it is, is it seven positions that were held vacant, that were filling in the police department? I think, right, seven? So could, I mean, could one of those remain, so, I mean, I just think it's so important when we're talking about hiring people, that these are lives, we don't want to, you know, to avoid at all costs laying people off, could we not hold one of those positions vacant in the event that, you know, something shifts with regard to the SROs? I agree with both Councilmember Fleming and Nusma regarding the SROs, so that they could move seamlessly, or at least one could move seamlessly into a position held vacant without, and thereby saving us the unnecessary expense of adding a position. Does that make sense?
Yep, so we only have, only one police officer position was held vacant in '21. I'm sorry, only one police officer position was held vacant in '21 that is then being added in, so that one position could be for consideration. The reality is, we have many positions currently actually vacant in the police department, so depending on, you know, how this shook out.
I think that's also a resource issue generally, so if we're down patrol officers, let's say the chief might need to deploy those officers on the street as opposed to the schools. I don't think there can ever be a guarantee that any one of those officers can be assigned.
But if we're eliminating, if we end up, I mean, it just seems to me that it would be wise and responsible to hold vacant that one position anyway, given that this is currently a discussion in conjunction with the whole reimagining public safety and everything else, that that would be, it's not a person, you know, we're not laying somebody off, so it seems to me that if we were to, that that would be a responsible thing to do to hold, keep that one position held vacant.
Are you, are you done for now, Councilmember?
Well, I was going to talk about all the positions, but I don't want to, like, it feels like we should probably stay on one topic, and then, I did want to comment in general on the.
If you may respond to this.
Why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Kelly, and just share your thoughts on the other items?
But it would be maybe an amendment, so I.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry. All right, so we'll come back to you later then. I think next was Councilmember Wynn, and I think Councilmember Reed is trying to jump in as well. He's spoken already, so we'll start with Councilmember Wynn.
I, I'm a little bit confused, and I just wanted to get clarification on the SROs first, and then I'd like to speak about these positions. So this, we are paying the salaries of the SROs right now, so if, if, if it's decided that they will no longer serve in the schools, we would still have them on our payroll, and they would just be moved to a different position. So why, what am I missing that, about why we'd have to hold a position open in order to take one of them?
Council Cummings, do we have a current IGA for those specific positions?
Yes, we have an IGA that it doesn't expire until June 30th, 2024.
But it doesn't include cost?
Correct, we are not reimbursed under that IGA.
Right, so they, we are paying the salaries, right? Okay, so, and we have an intergo, so we would have to break the intergovernmental agreement, or they would have to decide to, that the school district would have to decide that they no longer want the SROs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they're still on, okay, I'm still, they're still on our salary, we're paying for them, so they would just be shifted into one of these other 12 empty vacant positions that we have. So I don't know that we need to hold a position open for one of them? Am I?
That, that would be, again, it would have, just moving, just, I'm sorry, just stopping the SRO, sort of like having them in the schools, they would be moved to a different detail if down the line, council wanted to get a budget savings out of that. How to do that would be by holding more positions vacant. Those individual officers would retain, would stay, you know, with the department.
They're still in our budget.
I think Councilmember Kelly's point was that if those individuals were no longer in the school, but still on our budget, they could fill one of the vacancies we would otherwise fill with a new hire, and that's where the savings are.
Now I'm understanding. Okay, thank you. I just had it turned around. Thank you. So, and with respect to the SROs, obviously, we need to talk to our, talk to District 202 about this. I know that they did have some discussions, and I think it was inconclusive, and so they have, they still have them there. So with respect to these positions that, that the staff has kind of whittled the number down to, you know, I look at all of these as essential. We received emails, excuse me, we received budget memos and presentations from all of the different departments describing why they need these additional positions. Several of them, for instance, on the permit desk are going to likely bring in revenue, and then we know with Crown, it, that we want to make sure that that building is run correctly and as best as it can. So I think all of these are essential. I wish we had the money for the other nine, and I do think that the projections are something that we do have to take into consideration, but absent cutting significant services that we provide, and I don't hear any of us raising that issue, we do want to maintain the high level of service that are, that the residents expect us to provide, and we need these positions in order to do that. We've all heard from residents who don't, who are getting delays, we are trying to figure out what, where the glitches are in the system. Adding these positions will make our city operate better and up to the standard that people expect. So I recognize that going into the future, we will have some serious budget discussions over the next several years, but that's what we were all elected to do, to figure this out. And costs do go up, and it is expensive to live in Evanston, I fully recognize that. But we need these positions, and waiting for another city manager, a new city manager, I think that that undermines all of the hard work that the staff has done. I think that we can confidently make this decision, and we might not have a new city manager for several more months. That means we're living with a crippled city services, and I'm not willing to do that. Thank you.
Next is Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to echo some of the things I heard from Councilmember Wynn regarding the SRO, and I am pretty sure that for those of you that have lived in town, you have heard of one unfortunate experience at the high school, just given the nature of the teenagers, and now that they're back in session. I think that to remove the SROs now that our kids are back, and if you haven't heard, whether it's on the district level, the socializing of the kids, I think their presence there not only is positive, but it's a good thing that the officers have an opportunity to interact with the kids. In addition to that, they're there in the event that we need them there, and I think it would be absolutely foolish on our part to even have the conversation of removing them without a deep discussions with our district. So that's the first thing. We heard like two weeks ago from all of our staff members, the strain that they're on, and I would say shame on us from a leadership, like, sometimes I think as a group, we try to get too far into the weeds, but when our staff is telling you that we need additional resources, when our staff is telling you that our morale is low, when our staff is telling you that they're stretched thin, and there's no, no relief in sight, like, I hear that. And here are the positions that are up there, a number of them represent opportunities for revenue, particularly in the, in the permit desk, where I would assume that many of you have heard from just coming off of the summer. Human Resources, I think, speaks for itself, and then many of you, we've spent, I can't even tell you how many hours, just to craft a letter, and in there, there is a position for some, a recreation manager on the lakefront. So I'm going to be in full support of, of those staff recommendations, and I would encourage you, if you have any questions, talk to the staff versus us trying to whittle this down, looking for a magical number, without taking into consideration how it's going to impact our, our services as previously discussed. I think on the topic of our city manager, many of us sitting behind here are responsible for the atmosphere for the departure of our last city manager, and I don't mind saying that, and we are in operation, and so to wait for someone who could potentially come from out of our community to tell us what we need when we're sitting right here, I think is a foolish approach to, to that idea. So hopefully I didn't offend anyone, but it is what it is, and I'll say it again, if you have conversation, if you have concerns about the positions, how about you speak directly to the staff who's responsible for those new positions that are up there? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Once again, no one who has not yet spoken is seeking recognition, so we'll go next to Councilmember Reed, who has two minutes and 10 seconds left.
Thank you. I agree with, with many of my colleagues, I think there's a cross-section of agreement here. One, I agree with, you know, and I stated earlier, I agree with Councilmember Kelly that we should, you know, be holding off on this, but also certainly hear exactly what Councilmember Braithwaite, apologies, what Councilmember Braithwaite and Wynn are saying, and so, you know, I think the positions that specifically that Councilmember Braithwaite just listed are the ones that, you know, when I hinted earlier, that there's a select few that I think need to move forward. I think the permit desk, the maintenance of Robert Crown, certainly the HR director, the ones that, again, Councilmember Braithwaite just alliterated or stated, that those positions certainly should move forward, and I, if I can pull up the exact list, I'd say, you know, I want to move forward with those, with those particular positions. And so I'm going to make a motion, I'm sorry if I can pull up the list here. Someone can assist me with stating, Councilmember Braithwaite, can you restate the positions that you just, the ones that you see as most important there?
Thank you, Col. I would like to then move the 2022 budget ordinance that outlines the list that was presented by our staff, based on the discussion that we had by our full city council two weeks ago.
Oh, so you're moving the full list, or just the positions that you stated?
I'm not sure we need to make a motion to not change the motion on the floor, right? It sounds like what you're moving, Councilmember, is what's already in the budget, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
So do we need to, is there a reason for that motion?
Moved and seconded, I guess you can open it to discussion. It's already in there, so I wasn't sure.
I think, I think Councilmember Reed maybe interpreted your comments differently than you intended them. Councilmember Reed, have you been able to pull up the, the list to make your own motion, perhaps?
Yes, if you can put it back, the list back on the screen.
It is?
It's up there.
Oh.
Well, now it's.
I cannot see it, I guess. Oh, there we go, okay. So the positions I'm referring to are specifically the human resources, specialist, facilities, maintenance, permit desk. Oh, yeah, all of the positions. I guess, I would like to, I guess, talk to the clerk about the new deputy clerk position. I didn't realize that was the only position here that wasn't kind of very vital. So I do see it supported by vital records revenue, this is something we proposed, but can you maybe just discuss the new workflow in the office? I know vital records is a new position that was never in the clerk's office, but there are also a number of other positions that previously were, so I just want to get an understanding of the workflow in the office now.
Clerk Meadows?
Yes, this new position would handle all of the front-facing services, so the walk-in services, not only vital records, but people walking in to make FOIA requests, registering to vote, purchasing leases, so any of the walk-ins. Right now, as it is, we are not able to even go out for lunch, because if one person leaves the office and another one is on the phone, or someone walks in, it's just really hard to manage all of that. We also field a lot of calls from 311, people requesting documents or needing to go to other departments. And we also received a lot of services that weren't previously handled in the clerk's office for quite a while. We're updating the municipal code, sending our, all of our ordinances and resolutions out for signature, we're updating the website, updating municipal code, managing full-time the FOIA system, helping support staff with, you know, reminding them whenever they need to upload documents or FOIA requests are due. So that is in itself a full-time job, managing FOIA, and so we really need someone to manage all of the online requests, and then someone to manage all of the phone calls and all of the walk-in services, just to make the workflow in the office a lot easier.
Okay, yeah, that's interesting, I, as the former clerk, certainly, you know, when.
Okay. Yeah, I, that's interesting. I, as the former clerk, certainly, you know, when, when I first inherited the office, we were handling real estate transfer stamps, which was big business. It was certainly a large part of.
As a heads up, Councilmember, your, your time is up. I'll, I'll let you finish this, but just wanted you to know that.
Okay, I, I will, I will end my time. My time is up.
All right. Next is Councilmember Fleming with a minute 25 left.
So I had two things. Two, the issue of the staffing, I think if, you know, people feel strongly about the staffing, that I won't object. I would just say we have funding for a year. And I would tell you now, I'm not going to raise property taxes to pay for these staff that we knew we were bringing on when we only had one year to pay for them. So if folks are fine doing that, as I said last week, hire the staff, tell them we have a year, you know, worth of funding for them, and hopefully we can do more than that. I realize that's not an ideal thing to do, but it's also not ideal to, in my opinion, bring in staff when we know we don't have funding long-term to support them outside of property taxes. To the SRO thing, you know, I don't need to be a school board member to say whether they have police in their school or not. What I will say is that we don't have enough police on the street. We are paying half a million dollars between the two districts, just like with the crossing guards. If they would like a service, I think that it is not outrageous to have them pay for it. They all did also get ARPA funds. They all get more of the tax bill than we do. We hear from our police, in terms of bottom of Braithwaite's comment, we heard from our police several times about their lack of, you know, people out on the force and, and all the things that they're feeling right now. So I think we should be mindful to that as well. But I'm happy to have that as a policy discussion if that's the way we feel like this is going versus budget. I think it's budget to just have them pay for it, just like we talked about with the crossing guards. And then the last point about these positions and our staff feeling overburdened and everything else, I, I hear the same thing every day from my residents. They feel like they're being taxed to death. They feel like there's a bunch of fines. They feel like the service delivery is not that great. They have a lot of feelings, and that's who I'm responsible to more so. I mean, I'm also responsible to the staff, but my, my residents, if no residents live here, we don't need to have any staff. So in this situation, I have to balance the residents and the staff, and there's no way I can go to my residents saying, we need to hire all these staff and spend all this ARPA money when people, like I put the referral in, there are seniors who are having their properties, property standards coming out based on calls from residents or whoever else.
And your time is up as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Kelly is next with two and a half minutes left.
So I'd like to propose an amendment. I'd actually like to amend it to say it's 40 positions. That's a lot of money. And I agree, we really can't, I mean, I'm seeing big hikes in taxes in future years. I'm not saying not to hire them, but I do think we should wait until we have permanent city manager and a permanent head of HR. We're operating in, you know, interim situation right now in two key positions. So I would like to amend it barring, you know, some, barring positions that we vote on that are urgent, that these 40, 40 positions be, go to the permanent, be deferred until we have a permanent city manager and head of HR.
So as usual, I'll ask you to put that in writing, but what, what 40 positions are your?
So there's 29 held vacant and there are 11 proposed new ones.
Got it. So Councilmember Kelly moves to remove these new positions as well as 29 held.
Not remove. I don't know if I'd say remove. Now, so like it would still be budgeted, but we wouldn't, but it, we would direct, direct our interim city manager to defer all hiring until we have a permanent city manager and a permanent HR in place. And again, who knows, you know, maybe decisions we made that we don't need to hire this many. And certainly, I mean, it should be examined carefully. This town cannot afford these huge tax hikes.
So, so, so you're saying you want them in the budget, but then with some proviso?
Yeah, with some proviso that I'm not going to make a judgment right now on each one, but I'm saying that maybe with the new city manager, new head of HR, maybe we end up hiring half of them. And we don't, you know, we end up, so, because the tax hikes are going to be happening in subsequent years. I'd love to see five years out, but we're looking at substantial tax hikes. So I'd like these to be evaluated when we're in a situation of having hired a permanent city manager and permanent head of HR.
So I think, did you want to?
Point of, well, I guess I'll second it in order to allow discussion, but.
Okay, so, so this is a great example of why I really want amendments in writing because I, this one is great. And I just, you know, this is where maybe my status as a newcomer is not helping us. Is this, certainly not funding the positions seems like it's exactly our job. Is, is directing the manager on when to fill them, an appropriate role for city council in this form of government?
A city manager, yes. I mean, to, to direct them to be hired by a city manager.
So let me, let me ask the corporation council to weigh in on this one.
I would answer your question, Mr. Mayor, in the negative and say no. The hiring and firing of city staff is in the purview of the city manager. It's up to the city council to, to allot the budget to, to allow for that staff to be hired or, or not be hired because of a lack of available funds.
If I may, a point of information or a point of procedure for Councilmember Kelly, I, I think the proper way to address this, I actually 100% agree with Councilwoman Cummings that it, that is not appropriate. We would simply provide for a budget. If, if we were to take this route, we would then, at the time that, you know, folks feel comfortable, provide for a budget amendment to allow for the position. So I think the proper motion to achieve your goal would be to remove the positions now and then add them back in through a budget amendment process down the road when this council saw.
Do you want to amend my amendment? I'll second it.
No, thank you.
Do you want to amend my amendment?
So let's go, I'm not sure that that's in order either. Let, let's go to Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm sorry, I had to step out of the room for a moment, but when I look at this list, I recognize that, and I'm, I'm sorry, I missed some of the discussion. I recognize it's going to take us, and we've heard this before, it's going to take the city staff a period of time to hire these folks. The heaviest permit, just for, let's just take permits. The most intense period of time for our permit activity starts about in April. To bring somebody on board, get them well enough trained that they can handle the level of permit activity that we have and, and be part of the smooth-running operation, we have to allocate this money and authorize the city manager to hire these people now. It takes a period of time. The idea that we would micromanage and suddenly say, okay, flip the switch, hire the personnel, that's not our job. Our job is allocation, determining whether, what number of positions we need, given all of the needs of the city, and then allow the city administrator to administrate those things. But I look at this list, every one of them is, is going to be absorbed quickly and instantly into positions that are, are not, the jobs are maybe being done now, but as Councilmember Braithwaite said, we've heard over and over again how thin our staff is stretched. So I don't understand what this picking and choosing that's going on. This isn't the whole list that the staff even came to us with and said they viewed as essential. This is pared down to keep our operations going.
Right, well, I mean, there's clearly a difference of opinion up here, which is fine and appropriate. Just as a, as a kind of managing traffic level, Councilmember Kelly made a motion, Councilmember Reed seconded it.
Could I have the motion restated?
Well, so they think there's, there's some agreement that the motion is inconsistent with our authority as a city council and a council manager form of government. And so Councilmember Reed proposed, I don't know, Councilmember, I don't know if he was proposing perhaps a substitute motion, but his, his motion is simply to remove all this stuff from the budget with the understanding, not part of the motion, but the informal understanding that council will be likely to come back sometime during the course of the year 2022 to add, add some or all of it back in. So I believe Councilmember Reed is proposing to remove not only these 11 positions. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that was simply giving my opinion on what, how this can move forward. I'm, I'm not necessarily proposing that, but that is my opinion of how we can do this in a, in a manner that conforms with our authority and the rules.
And I think it's clear that that is a, that isn't, that, that motion would be appropriate.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused. I couldn't hear what the motion.
Motion would be to remove the new positions as well as the proposed unfrozen positions from the budget. That would be the motion.
And I think there would be an exception in there barring that we would, could vote on any specific ones that we felt were actually demonstrably urgent to be filled.
I feel like, Mr. Mayor, I, I have to be honest, that you're pushing something that I did not hear him say. He illustrated that as an opportunity for change.
That's, that's.
And I'm just saying, I'm just being clear. That's what I hear you saying. You're pushing that, and that is not what Councilmember Reed said. He offered it as an opportunity.
Let me be very clear about what I am doing. What I want us to do is resolve this as efficiently as possible. And what I believe I've done is to articulate a way that Councilmember Kelly's intent could be effectuated consistent with the state law. And if folks have a different recommendation for Councilmember Kelly, that's fine. Councilmember Burns?
I, I just want to say, if, if you can have it in writing and send it, I don't think this has support. I think it's probably likely to fail. But if you insist on us voting on it, can we please vote on this?
Well, has there been a second?
There hasn't even really been a motion yet. There was the motion that's out of order, and now we're sort of waiting to try to figure out what to do.
No, I agree. I think it, it won't pass. I can see that. But I feel very strongly that we're moving forward into very dangerous waters for our residents. And, and staff is that's, that's sacrosanct. I mean, hiring, these are human beings, lives. We want to make sure that every position we hire, that this is somebody we're going to keep. And I think we're talking about 40 positions. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of lives. That's a lot of time, and we're seeing that. And, and I think that might even be low, the low, low end on those projections for the next three years. I'd like to see five years, but I think it's even going to be higher. So I think we have to tread very carefully. So I'm not saying nobody, I'm saying barring any positions that we urgently need, we can vote to hire. But I just think we're talking about 40 positions. And, and I have great concern what this is going to mean for, for our residents as well as other aspects of our, of our budget, so.
And I think to Councilmember Burns' point, I think we, we understand your position, and the question is, is there a motion that you want to make and seek a vote on this evening?
Sure. So my motion is to remove the positions barring, with the exception of any positions that we would vote on, understanding that they are demonstrably, you know, urgent positions that need to be filled until we, until we are out of this transitional period of interim upper management, until we have, until we move to a position of permanent city manager and HR.
So just to clarify, I, I think what we can do is put something in the budget or take something out of the budget. I think what we can't do is put it in the budget, but then say it doesn't get to get spent unless these other criteria that are, other criteria are met. And so I would, I would, I would entertain a motion that says, take some stuff out of the budget or put some stuff in the budget. I think the, the other aspects of these motions, I, I don't.
And why can't we direct our interim city manager to defer hiring until, I mean, I thought that's the one person we can direct. Why can't we direct our interim city manager to defer?
State law is really clear about this, that the city manager has sole authority over personnel.
Right, but we direct city manager, right?
No, we pass the budget and we set policy.
Okay.
And so the budget, which determines the number of positions and how much money can be spent, is the fundamental cap, and we can come back and do a budget amendment. As, as I was, I was criticized for being clear about this before. We can do precisely what you're advocating by removing all the positions you're concerned about from the budget and, and just promising to ourselves and to the community, at some point during 2022, we'll come back and add some of, some of them back in. That, that's a motion that I, that I think you could make.
Okay, then that's my motion.
So I think the motion is to remove the 11 new positions and the 29 frozen positions from the 2022 budget. Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second.
I'm sorry, I'll second it.
Councilmember Reed seconds the motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember, Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffron?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Fleming? I mean, Reed, sorry.
No, no.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
No.
Jesus. With one voting in favor and eight voting against, the motion does not pass. Nobody else is seeking recognition.
I don't have any more time.
You don't have any more time, but.
So I'll bring up my budget issue next week.
Councilmember Revel with one more minute.
I believe our rules allow council members to go beyond the time limit if there is agreement from his or her colleagues. And I guess I would.
There's no objection.
If there's no, if there's no objection. And it seems to me we're, we're feeling pressed to be able to discuss all the budget issues that we want to discuss. And so I would have no objection to giving Councilmember Fleming some more time.
Hearing no objection. Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, this is a, so I like to make a motion about the SROs. I like to make a motion that we remove payment of SROs from our budget. And I would motion that for the SROs that are 202 as well as SROs that are 265. I realize it's a policy decision if they don't want the SROs, but I don't want us to pay for the SROs. So that is my motion.
And quickly, my, my question to Councilwoman Cummings, and I sent an email to them, can we do that per the IGA agreement?
No.
No.
Not, not without, well, strike that. Not without them suing us. So yes, we could do it, but then they can sue us. But it's, it's, it doesn't expire until June 30th of 2024.
When does the 65 IGA expire?
I have to look that one up.
Thank you. So how is that different than the, how is that different than the crossing guards? So we have a contract to pay the crossing guards, and we've proposed to not pay them for the whole year?
My understanding is our contract is with Andy Frain to provide crossing guards. I'm not sure about the agreement for the school district to reimburse us for that.
But not even reimbursement to the school district? There is no IGA with the school.
We don't have an agreement. We don't have an agreement.
So the contract with the city is, is simply with the provider.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilman, do you have anything else, Councilmember? All right. Councilmember Braithwaite.
No, I think this is a very encouraging conversation. I just want to bring us to the fact that we're at nine o'clock and we have a very lengthy discussion ahead of us. I think we should all be mindful as we're bringing up these very important issues that represent not only your word, your personal thoughts, and hopefully read the room that will allow us to move through the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Are we going to then jump past budget discussion? Would that be, just so I know? Or was that, well, I had another question about budget. Can we, did we incorporate the, and I can't remember the term, the lag pay? Or was that looked at? I, I would like to see it reinstated.
So it is, as stated at the last meeting, it is not staff's recommendation that we would add that. You know, we have to pay for, if we add a position next year, we, we have to budget it the year after when they're there for the full year. I did provide a budget memo that went out on Friday that showed a little bit of what those savings had been over the years. We do tend to see savings from vacancies, but again, that's a, that's something we, we would, we, staff would not recommend we change how we budget our positions as those vacancies then often generate other costs that, that it is helpful to see.
I can tell you, for instance, we have some temporary employees right now that are probably costing us far more than a salaried position. If we can get those salaried positions filled, then we can save money, but the workforce has been dwindling and it's been really difficult. So we, I, I think going forward, I, I think it's a huge risk to do a lag because we could end up having to fill those attempts, which will cost us a lot more money down the road.
But we all, we've always had, I mean, there's always, every single year, there's a minimum. a minimum amount of, whether it's a half a million dollars, that's not in employees that isn't covered. And, and that should be accounted for in our budget, in all fairness to taxpayers. And, and I mean, there always is. And I'm not saying, yeah, we have to fill some in, but there's always, if you go through all the years and you take the average, there's, there's a reasonable, a sizable chunk of money that's definitely, you know, not going out in the salaries that are budgeted for. And I just, I, I think that should be, we should, you know, take the last 20 years and see what that is.
And that is not staff's recommendation, but that is something that, you know, city council could choose to do in their budget.
And I understand. It's always nice to have extra money. I get that, like, for staff. And I, I mean, from your position too. I mean, but, but I think, you know, we have got to watch our spending and what we're, what we're levying on our residents. So-
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council, excuse me. Councilmember Kelly, when you say there is some savings, yes, there could be a savings because of the frequency. Where does it go? It builds up the fund balance. And what we are doing right now in this time that we could keep the levy flat, that's what we are proposing. You see in one of the proposals that we could potentially use the some fund balance. And in spite of that, I mean, going by the facts in last few years, we were not meeting our goal of 16.6% of the fund balance. I mean, that savings doesn't go anywhere-
Then just put it in though. But just put it in so we know then that that's our, that we know that that amount is going into the fund. Like, let's be clear. It's about transparency. All it comes down to is transparency, so that taxpayers understand what their money's going to. And so if we say, we got 50 million in, you know, staff, but in fact we only are spending 48, they should know that. That's all I'm asking for.
Right, but my, and, and it's a good point.
And that 2 million goes into the fund, or wherever it goes. But let's, it's, it's about providing transparency to our taxpayers.
And yes, I agree with your point. At the same time, as a staff in particular working in the finance, from the conservative standpoint, we see that our fund balance is dwindling. And I think at one point we were down to 10 or 11%. And we saw for that need. And again, now we are back to over 16%. We will definitely use it. If the council directs us, that go ahead and use some money to for the deficit or some of the expenses instead of raising, we are, we are more than glad to do that. So that's where it helps. I mean, but you have, yeah, good point.
Sure, it's money. It's like water seeking its own level. It's going to go somewhere. I'm not denying that. I'm just saying we need to account for it.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Nguyen.
I'm, I'm pulling up some information that I want to speak on. If, if you want to go, Councilmember Nguyen, and I'll go after you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was going to call the question. The, the question on introduction is for introduction.
What I, I just wanted to say that to Mike Vasilko's question, you know, my, my goal is to work with the Budget and Finance Committee to really analyze our budget in a way that I think Mike would appreciate and, and our city will appreciate. From what we heard from the, the new members, and not including councilmembers, but the new committee members who, who sit on that committee, is that they need time to understand our budget, to understand the city. They, they wanted the three-year projection, but they also at some point want to do a look back to see how we've allocated funds going three, four, or five years back, and mistakes we may have made, and things that we did successfully. So they, they're telling us they need time, right? I would love for them to be able to jump in year one, like, not even year one, like, first month in, and help us address this very complex and huge budget, budget questions that we have. But what our volunteer community members are saying is they need time. And I think they should be allowed that time to, to get themselves caught up, so that they can contribute to the city. And so, but that is the committee that, that I would like to see us look at, go department by department, and look at ways to be more efficient, to be more productive with our time, to use technology. In fact, I have a meeting even tomorrow with Citybase, which is a kind of a technology solution company that, that does, that creates kiosks in community where people can pay utility bills and other public services at different locations. And I think that could be a wonderful contribution to our city in terms of increasing revenue and doing other things. So to me, the Budget and Finance Committee is a place where, where this deep budget analysis can take place. I, I support these 11 or 12 new positions. And if we take a look at them, we're talking about kind of fortifying and strengthening our, our presence on the lakefront. We're talking about Crown, and we're talking about our, our permit deaths, which, again, I, I hear about, hear concerns about all the time. So I think these are all good decisions. I'm going to continue to look at the, the 29 positions that were held, that have been held vacant. But I think, again, you know, we're hearing from our staff, and they're saying they need these positions to do the work of the city. The last thing I just want to say, because sometimes it feels like the nine members up here are the only ones that, that are responsible for solving this, this huge problem that we're in, which in some respect, it's true. But bigger than that, like, the issue at hand is that, as a city, beyond just the nine people up here, we are not contributing enough to do the things that we want to do as a city, right? And that is all of our problem. And we all have to figure out, what are we willing to give up? Or what are we willing to, what new fee, or what are we willing to do in order to, to create more revenue to, to, or give up to run the city? That's all of our problems. Every single 70, not 78,000, because we got kids too. But, but it's not their issue. But all the adults certainly, that is all of our responsibility to figure out what we're willing to give up, how we want to generate revenue. That is not just our problem sitting up here. And, and I agree with the community. We need to figure out how to get more input from the community to help us, you know, decide how to address these issues. But we, at some point, we have to decide, or we have to take away, right? If we want to continue to provide the services at the level we're providing them, we have to figure out, you know, how we're going to generate revenue to do that. So I, I look forward to folks in the Fifth Ward and all over the community helping us to, to solve this issue, not just this budget year, but, but into the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
My apologies, I was taking recognition before.
Councilmember, Councilmember Nguyen moves to call the question. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. This is a non-debatable motion. And so would the clerk please-
Mr. Mayor, I saw recognition before Councilmember Nguyen's motion. I added amendment. They wanted to close.
I mean, you saw recognition after Councilmember Nguyen did. I, I promise I'm keeping track. And she saw recognition before you, which is why I called in her first. She actually saw recognition before Councilmember Burns, but I jumped him in line because he hadn't yet spoken on the main underlying question. But she had been in the queue for some time.
Mr. Mayor, just out of clarification, as I did have to step out to get some additional information, but is the motion that's being called to remove the SROs from the budget? Or is it the original SP1?
It's the original SP1 as amended by the amendment regarding Independence Park that was proposed by Councilmember Revelle.
Got you. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch Councilmember Kelly's vote.
Introduction? We're at the budget? No.
On this matter, with five voting in favor and no, four voting against, the motion carries. And the budget ordinance has now been introduced. So this will be on the agenda in two weeks. And there can be, at that point, there can be further, there will be further discussion. There can be further amendment. There could be a vote or, or not. I would, so now the next items on the agenda. SP2 is the city tax levy. SP3 is the general assistance tax levy. SP4 is the library tax levy. SP5 through SP8 are the SSA tax levies. So those are the, those are the other ordinances relative to the, to the budget. I would respectfully suggest that we handle them as one package, given their related subject matter, and the fact that we've already been talking about the budget. But I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'd like to move item SP2, ordinance 99-0-21, city tax levy, the dollar amount of $34,203,983. This is for introduction. Oh, my apologies. I should have, 33-
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay. Told him, yep. I'd also like to move item SP3, ordinance 100-0-21. This is the general assistance tax levy, in the dollar amount of $1,340,206. This is for introduction. Item SP4, ordinance 101-0-21, library tax levy, in the dollar amount of $7,476,289. And also, for introduction, item SP5, ordinance 201-0-21, levying taxes for special service area six for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022, ending December 31st, 2022. And that's going to be in the dollar amount of, of $221,000. This is also for introduction. Item SP6 is ordinance 103-0-21, tax levy, special service area seven, in the dollar amount of $142,000. This is also for introduction. Item SP7, ordinance 104-0-21, tax levy, special area number eight, in the dollar amount of $60,200. That's also for introduction. Item SP8 is ordinance 105-0-21, tax levy for special area number nine, and that's in the dollar amount of $592,665. That is also for introduction. Item SP9 is resolution 94-R21 through 109-R21. That is debt service properties tax, and that's going to be in the dollar, excuse me, abatements. Thank you, abatements. And staffers are recommending that at resolution in the dollar amount of, what is that, $4,623, oops, excuse me, $4,623,491. That is for action. Item SP10 is the allocation of the ARPA, oop.
I think it's probably best to separate that one.
Okay, want to separate? Got it. Thank you.
So Councilmember Braithwaite moves passage of items SP2, SP3, SP4, SP5, SP6, SP7, SP8, and SP9. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
On this matter, there are five voting in favor, four voting against, and items SP2 through SP9 pass. Just to be very clear, SP2 through SP8 have been introduced, and will be back on an agenda in two weeks. Again, for potential action and certainly discussion. Item SP9, which was a series of resolutions abating the debt service property tax, have, have passed. Those were for action. And so those taxes have been abated. This brings us to item SP10. Would anyone like to make a motion concerning SP10?
I'll, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move allocation of ARPA funds for grant management, compliance, and reporting. The staff recommends consideration of approval by the City Council of $900,000 in ARPA funding for grant management, compliance, and reporting.
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves item SP10. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, so I continue to be concerned about this, not about the compliance itself, but about some of the cost, particularly after we had the discussion last week. And Ms. Flax mentioned that she would do some of this, and then half of her role would potentially go to someone else. And understanding, as Mr. Braithwaite just said, we have staff who are already overworked, so I don't know where that would go. So I spent some time looking at what Cook County did. They obviously have much more money than we do, but they hired a consulting firm to actually go through ARPA the first time and figure out, as we call them, kind of the buckets. And then that firm will, by understanding, do some follow-up work. So I do think we need some compliance here. I am not sure, as I said, about our staff's capacity and, and finding someone new to do this, given all of the barriers to hiring these days. And so I would, I would love if we can look into potentially a consulting firm to handle this. And so it's, it's out of house, and we can make sure it's, you know, there's no holdup with bringing people. We just had conversations about bringing people online, which takes a long time, and so on and so forth. So for something like this, I would love for us to think about hiring a firm to handle. In addition, I would like whoever does this, for us to think about them also doing the internal compliance. And by that, I mean, making sure that the way in which we spend our money and the outcomes we're looking for are actually achieved or not achieved. I think that's something we should know ourselves, and something we should also be able to report to our residents. And so I would like that added to whatever scope of work we have, whether people decide to go internal or external, that we also have a report of, you know, how the money was used, and, and what kind of bang we got for our buck, so to speak.
Good evening, Sarah Flax, Housing and Grants Manager. Councilmember Fleming, that internal reporting of what is accomplished is absolutely intended to be done within this. I think that's very important. And that's something that isn't necessarily required to the extent that I, by the federal government, to the extent that I think our community requires it and deserves it.
Councilmember Burns?
Was just wondering if your question, Councilmember Fleming, was answered in terms of what would happen with the work that you're currently doing? Who would take on that work?
No, last week it was said that, you know, it would be assigned to someone else. But I don't think we-
I don't think we got down to how that would work out.
Good evening, Johan Nyden, Community Development Director. I think to an extent, we're waiting to see what, what, what direction we get from the City Council on this. But we would have to look at how the work would be shifted to address ARPA, but then also what work might come off Sarah's plate, and then what kind of position we would craft to do additional work, whether it's a, we have housing and economic development, analyst coordinator, we, we have those positions. Do we create another one of those positions? Do we create a supervisor-like position? We're looking for direction from you on what you want to fund from the ARPA compliance positions. And then we can work to backfill through our other funds in positions with home and CDPG admin and other, other things that are non-general fund-related, funding sources for positions.
So we plan on hiring additional staff to take on, to assume some of that?
That would likely be the plan, yes. But I just want to emphasize, non-general fund sources of money. Yes.
Want to explain that the current staff has already taken on the CARES Act funding. So that is already being done by current staff.
I just want to quickly say, just in my opinion, I think it's probably best that we have, I think it's a good thing we have in-house compliance, just personally. I mean, Sarah knows everything about what we do in the city, and it just makes sense that we'd have that. It sounds like Cook County has hired someone both to do what we're doing now. You know, I don't know how well we're doing it, but we're, we're making way. We're trying. But also-
That's the key. That is the key. If you look at what they produce and what we produce.
Yeah, and I hear you. And then, and then to do the compliance piece. So I mean, we've already started down the journey of doing the first part of what they're doing as far as their scope of work. I don't know if Cook County is also asking that same consultant to do compliance as well, or if that would be even new for them. But I think in-house compliance makes a whole lot of sense.
Councilmember Nguyen, followed by Reed, followed by Nusma.
I, well, I do agree with what Councilmember Burns said, all of it. And I, I believe that at our last meeting, Ms. Flax told us that she had heard, maybe I, perhaps, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, that she had heard from other communities who were hiring consultants at considerably more money than this. So I think by doing this in-house, we're getting extra value- So, I think by doing this in-house, we're getting extra value, and we're doing it for less. So, I think that this is a better pathway forward for us. There comes Mr. Fisai.
Yes, Councilmember Fleming, you're right. I talked to a couple of CPA firms, and they mentioned the rate of 2.5% to 3.5%, depending on the number of sub recipients, because they have to look at the sub recipients, their control, their accounting system, and whatnot. So, considering our $43 million and 1.2... I mean, 3.5% would be around $1.3 million. And yes, I did talk to the Oak Park, which are on the similar board, and they are still grappling with this question. I just talked to the... My counterpart there, and they... Yes, he admitted that that's too high to go through a consultant. So, they are thinking about going somewhere, hiring a couple of people like what we are thinking here.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Nusma.
Yes, thank you. Well, I had something else, but since you just brought that up, the... What was your range? Your range was from what percentage to what percentage of the total funding?
2.5% to 3.5%, depending on the number of sub recipients.
And then, so we're talking 1.3 million at the top end, and I'm sorry, what are we... What number are we looking at, the low end?
Low end would be 2.5%, so which would be around $1 million.
Okay. So, we're looking at a million of 1.3. You know, I agree with Councilmember Burns and Nguyen, they're thinking that having this in-house, you know, expertise is generally good, but ARPA is not a program, unlike the programs that Ms. Flax and her staff are usually dealing with. Those are programs that are existing in perpetuity. ARPA is a short-term, you know, we'll be done with it in a few years. By the time our term is over, I don't think we'll be talking about ARPA anymore, and it'll be a long, dead conversation. And so, to hire additional staff to the tune of $900,000 over the... It's over the course of, I think it's three years, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, to the tune of about $300,000 a year, unless we're planning on firing, which we don't tend to do, unless we're looking at, you know, hiring these people for one or two years and then firing them, this is just another set of positions that we're going to have to permanently maintain. And so, I think it, you know, yeah, we can say it'd be 1.3 at the top end over the next, you know, few years to handle this, but it would actually be quite more if we had to, you know, permanently hire new staff after this. It's going to be much, far more than $900,000 if you extrapolate out further. So, I agree with, I think, Councilmember Fleming's idea to follow the model of what the county's doing. I'm curious to see what Oak Park and other comparable cities actually end up doing. You know, if we were able to do... And then, if we're doing this in-house, we're going to lose, you know, talk about, you know, kind of losing expertise. We're going to lose Sarah and her expertise on the various items that she has spent her career dealing with, and so...
Councilmember Reed, Sarah is nodding her head. She's not going anywhere. So, just to be clear, she's sticking around. But, you know, one thing to keep in mind, all of our federal grants are always subject to the federal grant... Federal government giving us money. So, you know, that... All of our positions funded out of grants are always... Are subject to grants. So, that's something to think about, but also, we're still dealing with NSP2, something that happened 10 years ago. We still have money. We still get paid out of NSP2. So, there's... This is... It may be you have to spend the money in this period of time, but there's compliance. There's other work that will continue. There will be money that will be returned. I mean, there's so many ins and outs of federal grants that this will continue for many years. The position that we hired when we did NSP2 in 2010, that person stayed on and was funded out of other federal grants, because there were other federal grants that became available. There were other... There was other work for her to do that carried through the work that had been created through the NSP2 program. So, I mean, we are still doing work with NSP2. People sell their homes. We have to reconcile those grants. Those are things that we are still doing. So, we anticipate this is... This isn't necessarily a short-term activity, but this is a longer-term investment in our community. We have to monitor and make sure that those dollars are ongoing compliance. This creates more work for us, and that is sort of the hitch that comes with this kind of work. And we're growing our opportunities here through this kind of activity.
I'll just, really quick, thank you. Is somebody else in front of me?
Yeah, Councilmember Nusma has asked.
All right. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will throw my stick under the fire here and say I would prefer these... This expertise to be retained in-house. I do think $300,000 a year is steep. I'm very skeptical of that, but will begrudgingly accept that amount, and so I'm prepared to vote in favor of this.
Councilmember Burns?
I just wanted to underscore the point about the new position would be paid for out of some... A grant that we would find. I think that's important, right? That we would identify a grant to pay for that person we bring on. I think that's important to note, just to underscore. And then also, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but although this is a new, you know, ARPA is new, isn't it going to use some guidelines that are similar to other federal programs that you are familiar with? Like, how does... How do the two kind of relate and play off each other?
Well, there are certain things that are common, like the uniform guidance and administrative requirements are common to all federal grant programs. It is very much like the NSP programs, is that, you know, if you read their compliance thing, they say more guidance will be forthcoming. So, with NSP, we had a number of changes in the middle of the grant program. They would say, oh, now you got to do it this way. So, I expect that will happen. That's what usually happens with these programs.
With no one else seeking recognition, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Fleming?
With seven voting in favor... Pardon me. With seven voting in favor and two voting against, item SP2 passes. Sorry. Get in the game, Daniel. Okay. This brings us to the consent agenda. I have been asked already to remove a few items from it. Items A1, A3, A8, A24, and ED1. Would anyone like to remove additional items?
Could you repeat that, Mr. Mayor?
You bet. A1, so four items from APW. A1, A3, A8, and A24.
I'd like to add A22, please.
And then, let me just quickly finish the list, Councilmember. And then additionally, one item from economic development, ED1.
P2.
What was that?
P2. What's that?
Point of information, Mayor, this... The council... I support these, but the council recently adopted a rule that no item... And I just want to make sure that moving forward, our rules are, you know, universally equally enforced. We passed a rule that says that no item shall appear on an agenda until it had... If it's a policy change, no item regarding a policy change will appear on an agenda unless it's had an affirmative vote by the referrals committee to appear on an agenda of a standing committee. And I'm not reading the language exactly. It's just... And so, there are a number of items here that are policy changes that have not gone through the referrals committee. So, do we need to suspend the rules in order to adopt those? We didn't do that in the committee, but particularly here at council, wonder if that's... One, so there's a clear understanding from staff that we have to go through the referrals process, but also to conform with the rules.
I think that would be appropriate. I, you know, I've... I chose to sort of be permissive about this, simply because these items were in process before the rule was passed. But I take your point, Councilmember, that the rule now is in effect, and perhaps to be complete, we should vote to suspend the rules to allow this... These items to move forward.
Can I... Point of clarification, understand which items we're referring to?
Councilmember Reed, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. I mean, I don't want to... I support these items. I don't want to call... You know, for example, the parking garage amendments is a policy change. The other, I think, A22 is another policy change. It's amending the city code. You know, A23, you know, those things. So, again, I support these items, but I just want to make sure that we're... And there's more, but that's an example of...
So, I guess if I could respond in an interest of time, these are all operational items that traditionally we've seen over the last 10 years. I mean, if we're going to suspend the rules for every single thing, this makes absolutely no sense. So, I don't see a need to suspend the new... The rules for these items that have come through our committees to now hold them at council to...
Well, I mean, if you're most...
I'm not looking up. Okay.
If you're most interested in efficiency, Councilmember Braithwaite, perhaps the thing to do would be to make a single motion to suspend that one rule for the rest of the evening, and it'll take 30 seconds, and we can move forward.
So, I'll move suspension of the rules. I forget the exact... Is it rule 9.4? I don't know.
It's 9.7.
Whatever rule it... I'm sorry?
9.7.
Stupid.
9.7, all right. And I think it is, too. I didn't vote for this rule change, so, you know, we got to be careful about the rules that we implement and be thoughtful about that. But I move suspension of the rules, Rule 9.7, to allow for items that have not gone through referrals committee to appear on the agenda for the... To appear on this agenda and to be taken up for consideration by the council at this meeting.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves to suspend the rules, Rule 9.7, to allow consideration for the rest of the agenda for this evening. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
I'll abstain. Because it's stupid.
Councilmember Nguyen?
On the basis of stupid.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Fleming?
With eight voting in favor and one abstention, the motion carries, and the rules are suspended. Just to recapitulate, so far, the following items have been removed from the consent agenda. Items A1, A3, A8, A22, A24, P2, and ED1. Are there any additions to that list?
Can I just have a little clarity on the parking thing? I watched it at home, but it was a little bit... Bobby says it is...
I think they've been removed now. You said A3?
No, it's 22... Let me see. I think it was 22, 20...
I said A3, and I said A22.
And then, isn't there... Thought there was one more.
I did not say A23.
You said A8, A22, and A24.
No, you can leave 23. That's a reduction. I just... It was... The conversation was confusing on the TV at home, so I wasn't sure what happened.
Councilmember Burns, do you want 23 removed?
That's the parking, you know. You found that...
Yeah, that's fine. That's going down.
Okay. Are there any additions? Do you want me to read the list one more time? Are you ready? Seeing no further additions, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Revell moves the consent agenda with the exception of items A1, A3, A8, A22, A24, P2, and ED1. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the consent agenda passes. This brings us now to item A1. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion?
He said A1.
Yes, sir.
Approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity, activity for the period ending in August 26, in the amount of $19,205.31.
Councilmember Burns moves item A1. Councilmember Braithwaite, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
I abstain.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstaining, item A1 passes. This brings us to item A3. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion?
Approval of parking garage rate amendments.
Councilmember Burns moves item A3. Councilmember Braithwaite, seconds. Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Nusma, followed by Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk about the proposal to eliminate free Sunday parking, which I am not in favor of, open to full discussion at the council level here. But I think one option we have is to, you know, simply keep doing free Sundays entirely. Mr. Rivera also suggested an option to allow places of worship that have been using free parking on Sundays to give them essentially an exclusion.
That's correct. We can offer an exclusion for places of worship that are within a block of each parking garage, and we can continue to do that, either with a validation system or with pre-printed monthly passes that we can issue to the house of worship, and they can disseminate them upon people arriving.
I'll hold off on making a motion for the moment. Just interested to hear what everyone else has to say.
Councilmember Fleming, followed by Braithwaite.
Yeah, I mean, we... I feel like we're just now playing ping pong with this. We went free, then paid, then free, and then, you know, back to paid. I don't support this. I think... I guess I appreciate the creativity about having house of worship be able to park for free, but also, like, validating when you go to church sounds absurd to me, or for the pastor to try to figure out, like, how many people get the monthly pass, or however we would do that. So, I mean, I just don't support this. I realize, I think, Councilmember Burns' point was exactly correct. We don't bring enough revenue for all the things that our citizens expect us to do, which is more of a long-term problem that we've created here on the dais, and so probably we just need to figure that out. And this idea of, like, raising parking, going down on parking, raising parking is not the way to do it. I would love us, after the budget, to have a conversation about the parking fund and all of the things we've now start relying it to pay for versus it paying for parking infrastructure, which I think it should be paying for, and maybe parking staff. staff. But we've really come to rely pretty heavily on parking fees, and people complain about that. And I just think it's not a good long-term practice. So anyway, I don't support this, even with the vouchers.
To clarify, you don't, you would like to charge for parking on Sunday?
I don't support, no. I, I want to keep it free on Sunday. I want to keep the hour free. I don't support validation when you go to church, or vouchers when you go to church.
So you would, you would support a motion to keep parking on Sunday free of charge?
Yes.
Right.
But the motion is before me. I would not support as written.
There is no motion.
I mean, the A3.
Other than the whole thing, which includes parking on Sunday.
Let's move on then.
Okay.
Next is Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am in favor of the charging for the hour. I also would agree that with Sunday being a family day and day of worship, I think that that would be a good, good gesture for us to leave, leave Sunday free for the parking lot.
Sure. If you care to make that motion, that would be fine. Just, just to reiterate on Council, Councilmember Fleming's comment about ping pong. So prior, we did charge for meters on Sundays, and then we didn't. The garages have always had to free Sundays. They've always had to free one hour. Also, I would like to reiterate that this is, this, this parking plan that, you know, I've identified before you, A3 kind of works in conjunction with A22 and A, and A23 as well, being able to offer affordable parking rates throughout the city of Evanston to help with employee, business owner retention. This is also not a plan that is a whimsical plan. This is a plan that I worked with Allison Lipsiger, Jessica Heink. I even vetted this through members of CMAP, that being Lindsay Hollander. So, so this is something that has been in the works, and we've had several discussions with, with people. I've even made a point to reach out to the parking manager in Pasadena, California. His name is John Hamlin, and they recently just reduced the 90 minutes free in their nine parking garages, and they are now assessing fees as well because of the fact that their parking garages had, had racked up over $12 to $13 million of deferred maintenance. So, so this is, this is a piece that goes hand in hand with reduced parking rates and giving people parking equity, as well as looking into plans for allowing waived fees in parking in the near future, as well as tiered, possibly, wheel tax in the future to come.
Councilmember, Councilmember Braithwaite, are you?
I'm all good.
So next is Councilmember Reed, followed by Wynn, followed by Burns.
Yeah, with, with this, the free Sunday parking, you know, I'll support it. I really don't, I think that we should be thoughtful. I mean, Jesus Christ, literally, the, the churches and the places of worship already, you know, we don't charge them property tax. And so I wonder if this is a legitimate way to capture revenue. If we could, I would support the passes. I think that makes sense. But I think we should be thoughtful about, you know, some of the subsidies that we provide, and why we provide it, and what, you know, sense it makes. And so, you know, I'd love to move forward with the original proposal. As for folks who aren't on the committee, I think we missed a, a big part that maybe wasn't touched on here is that this, part of this proposal will provide for electric charging, charging stations, for bike parking. This will provide quite a bit of additional revenue to support some of the other items that, some of them we adopted, I believe, already, and some of them are yet to be adopted, but would provide parking equity across the city, and essentially spread some of the parking love to parts of the city that have underutilized lots, commercial districts that have underutilized lots, lowering parking rates there. And this, this funding will offset that, and we'll still be able to have, Mr. Rivera pointed out, the possibility of providing free parking QR codes for folks on, during snow emergencies. And so we have plenty of opportunity here to meet our, to meet the needs of residents, but also to make sure that we're, we're being responsible spirits of the assets and liabilities that we hold. I agree with Councilmember Fleming that in looking into the future, we need to ensure that, we need to operate the parking fund almost like a true enterprise. And I think we need to do that with a lot of departments. But particularly, I think if we can start shifting the burden of parking staff and more of the, the parking infrastructure, actually having that stuff funded by the parking fund, as opposed to it, you know, being kind of shifted out to various parts of the budget, I think that will make a lot of sense, and also really help us understand what the true cost of parking is for the city of Evanston, our residents, and what we really need to be charging to maintain the infrastructure in a, in a manner that is conducive to keeping a clean environment and supporting our local businesses. So I'll be holding this.
Councilmember Wynn, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rivera, I appreciate your efforts at innovating and coming up with new revenue. That is something that on the council, we've been asking for. And while I don't always agree with all of it, I really do appreciate your creativity and your effort to come up with other ways for us to make sure that our parking structures are still standing. And having been on the city council years ago, when we got the structural engineering report on the old Sherman Avenue Garage that said, "It's done," and we had no plan to rebuild another parking garage, we were in, we were in trouble at that point. And so I definitely appreciate staff's foresight and looking ahead on how do we maintain these structures that cost so much, and then how do we make sure that they're still operating well? I tend to agree with everyone on the, not for all the same reasons, but I tend to agree that I think having Sundays free is very valuable. But I also am willing to entertain the idea that we charge a dollar for the first hour. And I think that still would feel like a bargain to many people, and it would facilitate all of the high, remarkably high use of it that, that you detailed in, in this. I, for the life of me, I was trying to figure out what were all of those one-hour transactions? I, I go to the farmer's market. It can't be everyone going to the farmer, just going to the farmer's market. So clearly, people value that, and I, I don't want to eliminate, I don't want to keep it as free, but let's charge folks an hour and see if they're really sensitive to that. But I think we can capture some revenue there. So, but I agree with the others on the council. Maintaining Sundays as free is important. Thank you.
Thank you. That's reasonable.
Councilmember Burns.
I was going to say that the, I think a dollar free is fine. I would like to see 30 minutes free. This probably has the, the votes to move forward, no matter what. But I think it is, you know, it's a rough time for our businesses down there, and I would, I would support, you know, the first 30 minutes free. That's it.
So the only person requesting to speak hasn't spoken yet is Councilmember Kelly. I can put you in the queue for, for after that, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you.
I think this is absolutely the wrong time to be doing this, when we're coming out of COVID and trying to support our local businesses. This is not the time to be throwing now another reason for folks to decide to go somewhere else and park, or avoid our downtown. So I cannot support this right now.
So no one who hasn't yet spoken is seeking recognition, so we'll go to Councilmember Reed with two minutes left.
Thank you. Just to the point that was thrown out by Councilmember Burns, I, you know, as mentioned earlier, if we're looking to keep, as Mr. Rivera, as manager Rivera mentioned, you know, if we're going to have the 30 minutes free, it's an either or. I mean, in particular, if we're looking at the equity we're providing, you know, the reduced rate parking across the city, doing the 30 minutes free and free on Sunday would, correct me again, Mr. Rivera, if I'm wrong, but would certainly throw a wrench in this plan. And so I really, I'm extremely supportive of Councilmember Wynn's, if I, if I understood it correctly, Councilmember Wynn's suggestion, which is to make Sunday free except for the first hour. And please correct me if I somehow misinterpreted what your suggestion was. But certainly supportive of that. I think that makes a lot of sense to charge $1 for the first hour, and then folks can park for free on Sundays thereafter. And would certainly support that motion.
Councilmember Reed, I, I support the $1 for the first hour, and then.
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, but then Sundays would be free.
And then free on Sunday.
Yeah, right. But.
My apologies.
Right. Yes, thank you.
I still support that. I support that fully as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma with four minutes and 20 seconds left.
I'll, I'll make a motion on the free parking on Sundays. If you want me to reduce it in writing, I can, but I think we should maintain free parking on Sundays.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves that we retain free parking on Sundays. I will ask that motion be reduced to writing. While he's doing that, I believe that Councilmember Revel was at the head of the stampede to second the motion. She had a lot of, a lot of company, it sounds like. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Nusma's motion?
Can we just clarify where we are then on the first hour? I think I, so we're just, okay, we're breaking it up. Thank you.
This is, I'll read the motion when it comes, before we vote. Councilmember Kelly on the motion?
Just to clarify, and that's anywhere, correct? One hour on Sundays?
Free parking on Sundays.
Right, okay. Not with distance or.
For one minute.
In the garages, in all the garages.
All garages.
All garages.
From one minute to 23 hours and 59 minutes.
So, so Councilmember Nusma moves to remove Sunday fees from Item A3. Councilmember Revel seconds. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Is anyone, we still have to potentially vote. Is anyone else seeking recognition to discuss the underlying item?
I seek recognition.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember, Councilmember Reed with one minute left.
Oh, I was just going to call the question. Underlying motion.
Councilmember Reed calls the question. Is there a second? The question is, A3 is amended. Councilmember Reed calls the question. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. This is not a debatable motion, so will the clerk please call the roll on Item A3 as amended a moment ago?
Dollar for the first hour, Monday through Saturday.
We haven't done that yet.
I think this has only been amended to make Sundays free. No other amendment was made, and the question got called.
So we have to vote on calling the question?
Oh.
It does.
It's free on Sunday. That was the amendment that was made up through the committee.
The motion that entered was eliminating free parking for the first hour and on Sundays.
So you've dropped out Sunday?
So, yes. So the motion on the table is eliminating free parking for the first hour.
Wait, eliminating?
There won't be any fee on Sundays period with this motion?
No, that motion is passed.
Right.
Sundays are free. We're now only talking about Mondays through Saturdays.
First hour is no longer free.
First hour is no longer free.
Okay.
Councilmember Revel makes a good point. I need to call the roll on the, on the calling of the question. Thank you. So will the clerk please call the roll on the question, of calling the question?
Let's just vote no, and then we can go back to this.
There's a whole lot of debate for a non-debatable motion. I mean, I guess I withdraw the motion at this point.
Counsel.
What was that, Councilmember?
I guess I withdraw the motion to call the question at this point.
All right. Councilmember Reed withdraws the motion to call the question, which gives me a chance to ask my question. Mr. Rivera, and I think Paul Zalmazak is in the, is in the Zoom as well. My question is very simple. We've all, we've sort of alluded to tonight, and, you know, we've all heard every day of our lives, elected officials in this town, debates back and forth about the connection between parking fees and economic development, and how, you know, what the impact on our small businesses downtown is. What data do we have? What, what, what can we learn from to help us make an informed decision? Either national studies, surveys, experience, as we've made changes in the past, anything like that? So is.
Mr. Mayor, this is Paul Zalmazak, Economic Development Manager. Good evening, members of the council, city clerk. Your, your question is, what data exists on essentially planet Earth that describes how parking prices impact shopping and businesses, correct?
I would reluctantly accept another planet, but Earth would be my preference, yes.
Thank you. So we, we recently, for example, we hosted a planner from CMAP that Mr. Rivera referenced earlier, first name is Lindsay, I have forgotten her last name, who presented the fact that there's really no such thing as free parking, and that has been stated in numerous studies. And it's, it's not good public policy to provide free parking, just generally speaking. It's, it's not something that, that we should do. Now, there's price sensitivity. If it's priced, if it's priced too high, that will be a deterrent. So sometimes you have to let the market float and determine pricing. In Evanston, this is, again, I've been on staff for 10 years. This is a never-ending debate. We, we go back and forth with it. And what we, what we've done in the past, and I think there's been a nice balance, is that we do, we do free holiday parking or holiday validations to help. And the merchants seem to like that. The rest of the year, you know, I think we all tolerate the fact that we, that we need the parking. One final comment I would make is that we have in the past talked about parking as a way to, to move cars and make sure that we're, we're really turning spaces over so we can get more customers into the spaces, so it's not as hard to park. We're hearing a little bit of a different conversation in the last few months about the need for revenues. So this is, this is, we're at a crossroads. I know that doesn't give you the answer that you asked. We're at a crossroads. Why are we, why are we having paid parking in Evanston? But I think what you'll find in the data is that low-cost parking is not a deterrent to business. It's a inconvenience to have to dig for a quarter or figure out how to use the machines. But overall, if it's priced right, there's a balance, and there's an expectation, people, people know they have to pay. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly, followed by Councilmember Wynn.
So we did discuss this a little bit in APW, and there, we have not ever done it as a city. There is no, no correlations or studies done to look at revenue as a result of either free parking. And so I think that is really important. And also, this study, I was at the Economic Development Committee, and that was done outside of the realm of COVID. So I do think we have to think of this in the context that we're living in now. So, so I just want to add that piece, that we have never done anything looking at our revenue and comparing it two times with free parking. And that the studies don't reflect a serious period of time like we're in now. So I ask that we all think about that seriously and not just, you know, resort back to studies done pre-COVID.
Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think COVID does change things quite a bit, but Mr. Zalmazak is right. I served on, I served on the Parking Committee, Parking and Transportation Committee, the entire time. I served on the Parking and Transportation Committee the entire time I've been on the council until we dissolved it. And I think this would have been a really good topic to have at Transportation and Parking so that we could have debated this and understood this better. But what, over the years, what we have done is when we have studied the amount of time that shoppers used our meters, it was about just under two hours, about hour and 35 minutes or so. And that's how we came up with segmenting it for two hours. Then we also heard from the merchants that they wanted us to make sure that we enforced well because their employees would park in front of their store. And no amount of, their telling them not to really worked. So that, Mr. Zalmazak is right. The idea of you have time-limited parking is to encourage people to move along so the next person can take a spot. The other thing that studies do show is that if you price street parking higher than garage parking, that will drive people into garages. And that has been documented many times. Now, there are, of course, people who will never park in a parking garage, ever. And we certainly do hear from a lot of those people. So they will continue to hunt. But I think people do have a sense that there is free parking in places. But if you look at, like Old Orchard, those acres of parking, all of that is priced into all of the goods that you buy at Old Orchard. It's not free parking. So we don't have any immediate studies, obviously, because COVID is changing everything and it's, you know, the Delta variant continued to change things. So I do appreciate Councilmember Kelly questioning what we should do about parking in the downtown and certainly having served on the council and served on the Transportation and Parking Committee, I've heard many times from people about the cost of parking in Evanston. I would like to point out that there is an enormous difference between our downtown and Wilmette. They don't have parking structures. They don't have tall office buildings that required people to find a place to park. And that makes a significant difference because I certainly hear about free parking in Wilmette from people as well. There's not much else to do in Wilmette except eat dinner. So their downtown is not doing particularly well. So I understand that we do need to be sensitive to this and figure out what we should do, but I think we do need to continue charging for parking because if we make it free, it will fill up at 6:00 in the morning and those cars won't move because it'll be people who live in the area who just park there. Or there'll be employees who just park there. So we do have to have turnover. The issue of price sensitivity, price elasticity, that's a really difficult one and communities all over the country struggle with that. I would say I think what Chicago has done is terrible. They sold their parking system and there is no connection between the price there and the community. And that would be the worst possible. And I don't think we would ever do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed with 45 seconds left.
Yes, I will be extremely grateful then. I just want to reiterate to your question, Mayor Piss, and to what Councilman Nguyen was just saying. Parking meters are graded exactly to certain economic benefits, as you stated, for turnover. And what I think Paul didn't say clearly enough, which I hope is clear, is that essentially what he was saying is that every bit of academic research and all, and just about every paper, it's one of those like nine out of 10 dentist-type things, say that free parking is not the way to go and that we have to effectively charge for parking. And so there's pretty significant consensus amongst folks who are studying this that that is the correct approach and has stated that it's not good public policy. And then what I'll say in closing is that when we don't charge adequately for parking, it's not only is this a matter of equity because of the proposals that Manager Rivera has put forward, but it's also just generally a matter of equity because when we don't adequately charge for parking, then we still have to maintain those facilities. We still have costs associated with the staff, you know, associated with those facilities enforcing parking. And that cost is then shifted away from drivers, away from people who, you know, tend to have a bit more and it's shifted on to all of us, including folks who do not own vehicles and who have a lower, you know, expense because of not owning a car and a carbon footprint. And we should not be shifting that cost to those folks. We should make sure that folks who are owning vehicles and using vehicles and putting a burden on the system are paying their fair share for use of that convenience.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly with four minutes. And I just want to, just again, sort of where we are. We had that motion to call the question. It sort of got pulled because people wanted to make an amendment. There still has not been an amendment made, so just want to flag that before anyone votes. Councilmember Kelly.
So in terms of turnover and restrictive time, that doesn't, having a one-hour free parking doesn't change that at all. I mean, it can be just as restrictive with one-hour free parking. So I think we're not saying all day. And then also, I just think it's really important that we have the flexibility of mind to understand the context that we're living in and to consider that maybe, in fact, Councilmember Reed, that the economic benefits may, in the end, if this can help jumpstart our downtown, benefit us far more than, you know, some added revenue over the next year. And I'm talking about right now, for this year, as we're trying to get our downtown out of its devastated state. So I think we all have to have that flexibility to not just say, oh, well, all the studies show, all those studies were in normal conditions pre-COVID. We have to consider the situation and consider, and since we don't have studies, consider it's possible that the economic benefit that we could derive from having a downtown that everyone's just like, wow, this is really nice. I can go and park for an hour in the garage at this point. Anyway, I think we have to be able to think in those terms as well and not just lock into studies done during normal times.
Thank you. Is anyone else seeking recognition? Councilmember Revelle?
I just have a question about what the motion would be. If we're eliminating free parking in the first hour, are we then saying the rate would be a dollar for that first hour? I mean, I'm not, it's not clear to me what the actual motion would be.
Sure. The recommendation was to eliminate parking, the first hour on Sundays in the parking garages. So that's the recommendation that I had. We were going to set the rate. So our recommendation for setting the rate was going to be a dollar an hour. So if somebody wants to make a motion to amend it for a dollar for the first hour Monday through Saturday and then free all day Sunday, that would be acceptable to us. The other thing, I just want to take a moment to comment that we seem to be hyper-focused on what we're taking away from the parking garages and we're not discussing what we're looking to put back into all the parking infrastructures throughout the city of Evanston. We're looking to bolster our climate action resiliency goals. We're looking to add bike racks. We're looking to add EV chargers in all three of the parking garages. We're looking to add bike fix-it stations at the parking garages. We are lowering essentially parking rates by 75% in some parking lots that are currently $2 an hour to $0.50 an hour, allowing people to park for up to 12-hour limits. This has been, this is very impactful for part-time employees, for employees earning minimum wages that only work one to two days a week or perhaps even a shift. This is something I've discussed with Paul Zalmazak on several occasions. And the plan that we're outlining allows us, in conjunction with A22 and A23, to do this holistically throughout the town, from the Howard Street border to the Central Street border, along Seville Street locations, as well as many parking lots in every single ward of the city where metered parking exists.
I would love to see 30 minutes free, 45 minutes free, just based on where we're at, but I'm going to support this either way just because I want to make clear that I don't think that free parking is what brings people into downtown areas. I happily pay for parking in Chicago downtown and everywhere. And I do it because the thing that's there is that important to me. And I think that's what we need to focus on in terms of economic development is how can we make our downtown so attractive and really get, draw businesses there that people are willing to pay a buck, two bucks, three bucks for. So I just wanted to be clear that, yes, I'd like to see 30, 45 minutes free, but I'll support this because I think that's really the direction we need to go in if we want to strengthen and draw more people into our downtown.
Well, no one else is seeking recognition. So with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll. And just to remind us, this is A3 as amended by, amended to restore free Sundays and make no other changes. Is that correct?
Wait, wait. No.
We've already made Sundays free.
So now we're just charging.
The last vote now is to charge, is to eliminate the first hour, is to charge a dollar for the first hour.
There you go. Yes, there you go.
Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
Thank you for that clarification.
Say that again?
A yes vote at this point would be to charge a dollar for the first hour from Monday through Saturday. Currently it's free.
No one made that motion.
I'll move that we make the first hour of parking in our garages Monday through Saturday, $1.
Second.
All right. Counsel, go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, I just want to make one point. I do think if Paul and Mike can get together and see what we can do with sales tax data, if we can create, not looking at any particular business, but I'm sure if we were to create an overlay of our downtown, that this would be an acceptable disclosure of the overall sales tax that's generated by our downtown and do a comparison. Because, I mean, we're talking about nearly, in a regular year, in a non-COVID year, you know, $700,000. In the COVID years, we're talking about half that in annual revenue. And so to generate that kind of revenue in sales tax is significant. And so I think we should really, if we want to have a study, I think we should look at that and see what is the impact and at what point is charging for the parking more effective to raise revenue. And so I think that information can be gathered.
Thank you. Now can you put your motion in writing, please, councilmember?
Oh, shucks. Here.
And was there a second to Councilmember Reed's motion?
Yes, from Peter.
Got it. So Councilmember Reed moves to make the first hour in garages on Monday through Saturday, $1. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Just let us know when it's on the way, councilmember.
There's a very informal version of it there. There you go.
Thank you very much. So again, the motion on the floor is to amend A3 to institute a $1 charge for the first hour of parking in garages Monday through Saturday. Would the clerk now please call the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, the amendment passes. And seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on A3, which has now been amended twice?
There's nothing left in A3 then.
Oh, right.
It's as amended.
What's that?
Yeah, as amended.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's as amended.
Yeah, it's been changed twice and now there's a vote on the underlying item that needs to occur. So it's been amended twice, once regarding the Sundays and once regarding the first hour being $1. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Burns? Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, A3 as amended passes. This brings us to item A8. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion here?
Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract with Holla Bird and Root for Architectural and Engineering Services for the Evanston Animal Shelter Improvements, RFQ 20-53.
I'll second.
Councilmember Burns moves item A8. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? He's not here anymore. Councilmember Fleming?
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, item A8 passes. This brings us to item A22. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion there?
Yes, a motion in approval of Ordinance 121O-21, amending City Code Section 10-4-1, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specified places, and 10-4-2 obstructing traffic.
Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Burns, can you restate the motion?
The motion is the passage of item A22.
Yeah. Amending City Code Section 10-4-1, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specified places, and 10-4-2 obstructing traffic.
I mean, I'll second that.
Councilmember Burns moves item A22. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So we discussed this in committee. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So we discussed this in committee and what this provides for is if folks are doing really outrageous things, you know, parking on a sidewalk, parking in a bike lane, you know, parking in the middle of the road. Currently, we charge a higher, as is pointed out in the memo, we charge a higher fee for street sweeping, you know, for street cleaning violations than we do for someone parking on the sidewalk. You know, we had some public comment during committee which pointed out something that I think should be a trailer to this, which is, you know, that we should actually make a law prohibiting parking in a bike lane because it's not expressly prohibited. because it's not expressly prohibited, at least from the expression of the resident that shared with us. And so I think this makes total sense. It's fairly revenue neutral. This isn't a, you know, a money grab. It doesn't have really a large impact, you know, when, when we look at some of the other things that we adopted earlier. This is, you know, $50,000 roughly. And that's just in this year's, you know, in 2021 dollars year-to-date. And so again, not super significant. We tend to not want people to do these things. I think this makes total sense to bring alignment with, with the way we treat other code violations, which are much less harmful and don't have a safety impact, certainly have an impact to the city's operations, but don't have the same safety impact that this, this item has.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Reed?
I put Revel.
Revel?
Sorry.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Now, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
With three voting in favor and five voting against, item A22 does not pass. This brings us to item A24. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion?
Move approval of ordinance 95-0-21 authorizing the city manager to execute a sale contract for city-owned real property located at 2022 through 2026 Central Street.
Councilmember Burns moves item A24. Councilmember Revel seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, item A24 passes. This brings us to item P. Sorry, I have my order wrong here. I apologize. This brings us to item P2. Councilmember Revel, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move ordinance 111-0-21 extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit to construct the planned development at 1900 Sherman Street, previously authorized by ordinance 109-0-20.
Second.
Councilmember Revel moves item P2. Councilmember Braithwaite, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So anyway, so I, obviously, this, this moved along before I was elected, and I have been opposed to this project. It's a project that's going up to 16 stories in an area that's zoned for nine, where we lost affordable housing units. So I just wanted to sort of make my case there that, you know, we went from being an entirely about 80 units down to 34. So and I also, you know, several of the residents of the Pearlman that are there in the past had asked me to speak. And, and now they sent a few statements if I could just read these really quickly and be within my time from some of the residents. And I realize this is about extending the permit time, not about the building itself. But nevertheless, I'd just like to read these. This is going to make it really hard for me to be in, well, because they're going to, about the parking spaces are going to be tremendously reduced for the current residents. This is going to make me, make it really hard for me to be independent. I am lucky enough to have a car, but I can't walk very far, even with my walker. And it will be very hard for me to get to that dark garage or to the parking spaces down the street. I will be afraid to be out after dark. And my daughter won't be able to visit me because there, there won't be enough parking spaces for guests, and she can't walk good enough to use public transportation. Another resident, we won't be as important as the people in the new building. So these are going to be mostly market rate units in the new building on the public lot, public parking lot there at 1900 Sherman. We won't be as important as the people in the new building because they won't be Section 8. They will be so close, and we will have to keep to ourselves. Another resident said, it will become too congested. It will not be fair for seniors who are still on long waiting list. And another, people at the housing authority don't care about us or about keeping our place nice. They will make it look good for a while, but then they will forget about us again. We will be crowded in a little space, and no one will care about making it nice. So thank you for letting me read those. I am concerned about the impact on our residents, currently our low-income residents living in the Pearlman, and also for the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, this is a 16-story building in what would be zoned for nine, the Pearlman's 11. We, you know, I know previous council kept the link down to the 11 to run flush with the Pearlman. So I'm just not happy about this. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Fleming?
I, I have a question, and I want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. So I know they, why they had to make some changes here, but Councilmember Kelly, your statement about losing more affordable housing, I thought the only change in terms of the housing was that they decided they needed to make a couple more bigger units. I realized those bigger ones weren't necessarily going to be affordable, but I guess I'm not seeing it here where there's a loss of affordable units. Can you have clarity?
So we're losing parking spaces, but from the original plan, we lost, we went from 80 down to 34. But that's going back in time. It was originally going to be an 11-story building with 80 units.
Okay, but now I'm talking about what was approved before.
What was approved before. So I'm just saying from, and that's why I mentioned that this happened well before I was elected.
Right, but what, okay, so what?
So now we're talking about a reduction in parking spaces, but also.
But not reduction in affordable housing?
No, except that, except that.
That was my question.
Well, except that the affordable units do not reflect proportionally the market rate units. It's supposed to be proportionally. So whatever percent it is, we don't get the two bedrooms. We don't get, it's, 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 our IHO says that it's supposed to have, reflect, you know, your, your percentage is supposed to reflect the makeup of the other, and this doesn't.
But I don't, but I don't think we have that in any other building we've approved. I mean, a lot of buildings that I've sat here, and not that I've approved them all.
No, generally do.
They have whatever number of units, and then they might have six affordable housing. They have like a 10% I think was our.
Right, but they, they will mirror the, what if we have, you know, 20?
Oh, I think we've approved, and again, I'm not saying our, our IHO is great, but we've approved a bunch of studios.
And some that are almost predominantly studio buildings.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
And then the last, last thing, but this is.
Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, it was, you know, it was owned, they asked for C1A zoning. This isn't a commercial building in order, because of the, the distance required, the distance requirement between the buildings, they wanted to put the one building up really close to, to the Pearlman. And therefore, they, so they had it zoned, C, commercial zoning, in order to put it really close. Now it's going to be zoned out, you know, much further because of the, the issues that they discovered with the foundation. So now it really should be going back to R6 zoning. So I wish they would apply for it as in, you know, within the R6 zoning, but that's all.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, item P2 passes. This brings us to item ED1. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion?
One second, let me pull it out. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'd like to move item, excuse me, item ED1, which is resolution 117-R-21. It's the Main Street Howard Retail Food Establishment Infrastructure Construction Pandemic Grant Program.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item ED1. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Fleming?
Yeah, this one is, is challenging for me. I have heard lots from the people over on Main Street, as it borders my ward. I know the construction project was less than ideal, and I thank Jonathan for working through it. However, I'm really concerned about the precedent it sets, no matter if we said this isn't going to set a precedent, because we, we do have to do construction on our streets, and we, you know, obviously, nobody predicted the pandemic. Definitely, I did not think the construction was going to be kind of handled as poorly as it was. But I don't know what, if we do this, if we have construction in downtown Evanston, you know, how those, how those businesses don't come forward and say, well, you know, they've had lost income because of construction downtown Evanston, or the construction goes longer, or something happens with construction. So I'm super concerned about this. And then I will also just say, you know, kudos, I guess, economic, economic development for trying to figure something out. But I, I just really don't know where this stops. I mean, I know we're saying pandemic, but I don't, I don't think that there's a way we can not do it, or someone can't ask for it somewhere else. And then I would just continue to say that I'm also concerned with the residents who have needs, and we haven't been able to meet them. Not that we need to meet everybody's needs. But, you know, we're meeting businesses' needs for, for lost revenue. But, you know, we know we had a lot of residents with lost revenue and, and a lot of other difficulties during the pandemic, and we haven't necessarily been able to kind of meet their needs. So I know I have residents who email me about this, who would like me to support this, but I'm, I'm concerned with this as for future businesses to come forward and have some needs that they think we need to kind of compensate them for if we approve this.
Next is Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Nusma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to, for those of you didn't attend the economic development meeting, this was a very lengthy discussion. And Councilmember Fleming, I definitely understand your concern regarding precedent. However, 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 despite, you know, for all of our CIP projects, we always give our business owners plenty of time. I think with this, I definitely want to make exception because of two reasons. Because not only were there complications due to COVID, but after most business areas opened up, that's when they suffered the loss in terms of the added construction. So I just wanted to make everyone clear, and I'm just going to read this. Staff is recommending this wasn't just for those in the public who aren't paying attention. So staff recommends that the city reimburse up to 50% of the revenue differential year. So they have to prove that they lost, number one, and that's going to be up to $25,000 for the respective construction period during that construction period. And the total amount will not exceed $150,000. So for all total grants. Just so we're clear in terms of what we're voting on. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Burns.
I am going to support this, although Councilmember Fleming does raise some very legitimate objections, and, and they're worthy of consideration. And I've made clear when talking to folks about this, that I will support this only because of the unique confluence of construction immediately following or still during pandemic. If it weren't, no pandemic, no funding is pretty much verbatim what I, what I have told people when they've asked me about this. So I will support this and would, will respect anyone for not supporting it for the reasons that Councilmember Fleming has stated.
Councilmember Burns?
Happy to support this. I, I just thought of a scenario, though, that's not completely similar to this, that, that I won't go into for the sake of time, but I think Council Commons is somewhat aware of it involving an issue of my ward. But are we opening ourselves up for future issues with litigation if we don't do this for other businesses? And they come up with some, a similar scenario of how they've been harmed? And that's the last thing that I, I need to get a better sense of. And I don't know if you're familiar with this item, but would love to get your opinion on it.
I, I can't, I can't say that I'm familiar enough with the item based upon what's been read into the record and what was described by Councilmember Braithwaite. Unless the city and the city council decides to arbitrarily classify these businesses for some reason as to why they shouldn't be able to get reimbursement or what have you, I can't see a, a way in which one of these entities want to, or be able to sue the city successfully for failure, like if, if the city decided to deny them.
No, I think he's saying like if another business, you know, if we had construction saying on Church and Dodge, and a pipe busted and whatever, I mean, I'm making that, I don't know what would happen. But like another business entity wouldn't say, hey, you didn't compensate me, and so therefore, is that what you're asking, right?
Sometime three years from now.
Well, there's a couple of things playing into that scenario. But again, unless there was some sort of arbitrary designation by the city as we're going to reimburse this business, but not this one, it, it depends on the criteria that are laid out in the, in the process. And so my understanding is what was just informed is you actually have to prove the lost revenue related to the construction. So unless, unless we deviate from that sort of criteria, and we start arbitrarily assigning which businesses we want to reimburse and not, then I don't believe that we would be at risk.
So can I ask another follow-up question? Because this is my concern. So we are still technically in a pandemic, whether people believe it or not. And so if we have construction, you know, on Oakton, and it, you know, businesses say, hey, I didn't, we're in a pandemic, I haven't recovered from the pandemic, you're now starting construction on Oakton, and therefore, I'm losing money based on the timeline of your construction. My concern would be that that business would, would then be open, you know, could say, cite this and say, hey, I also want a reimbursement here on my receipts. I mean, that is my concern, right? Because we are technically still in a pandemic. We still have to do construction, and any construction can cause you loss of revenue. And so I don't know what the parameters are that we put on here that would keep us from not just having a revolving door of our requests that would be valid, based on how I understand this to be laid out.
Is there a limitation on the grant funding? So I, I guess it would be a matter of them meeting the criteria, at least, at least, at least until we extended all of the funds available. So if they, if they met the criteria and the city council voted appropriately, it would be until there's no money left. But if they didn't meet the criteria and the city council voted appropriately, they could, a business could attempt to try and sue us, but I don't, I don't see a path where that would be successful.
I, I think the question isn't so much about the funding in this grant, but does it establish by precedent, does it establish our right to a similar type of grant if in the future a hypothetical business is facing a similar confluence of challenges?
The, the right already exists by their ability to apply for it. So there's no guarantee in terms of the application. Like, once, once they apply for it, there's no guarantee that they're going to get it. We've already established by opening it up and saying, there's this pool of money you can apply for. What then becomes an issue is if we start delineating between applicants in some sort of arbitrary fashion.
Which is what we're doing now, based on the street, right? So like, again, if I use, right now, it's Main Street and Howard Street with specific spaces. If someone on Oakton says, I fit the same criteria, I'm just on Oakton.
That's not an arbitrary designation, in my view.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm more so, and this is obviously apples and oranges, but, you know, non-residents versus residents, or, you know, assigning it based upon ward without any sort of rational basis.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I'm going to be supporting this. This is, I hear the concerns, not particularly the legal concerns. I don't think we're, I just like to play a lawyer from the dais, but I don't think we're opening ourselves up to any legal concern, or we certainly could be setting a precedent. I just do want to know that these streets, both Main Street and Howard Street, particularly with the new construction, they operate in a, they're kind of like, particularly Main Street, with the design of Main Street, it is very much like a Main Street in a down, you know, in a small town downtown. And, and what I mean by that is, in both areas, folks rely a lot on on-street parking, rely a lot on foot traffic and inviting nature. You know, Main Street had Red Acaster, the, you know, the oasis there. And so I, I do think this is a very unique confluence of events, you know. And so it, I think it's really going to be hard for someone to, to say, look, we, we fit this exact category, and we've had these, these exact, this exact harm in this period. And so I, I think it makes sense to move forward with this. I, I think it's actually going to be somewhat, I mean, I don't know, know folks who are going to be applying. I'm actually kind of interested to see how much money we actually are able to give out because it's a fairly, the, the restrictions are.
are somewhat strict in that you have to prove that you lost money, you know, from 2020, you know, from last year, and the height of the pandemic to now. And so I think that's going to be an interesting burden for folks to meet. And so, given that, I think, I think we're really in a, in a safe zone here. So I'll be supporting, yes.
With no one else seeking recognition, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
I'm a reluctant aye, for the record.
With seven voting aye, one voting reluctantly aye, and none voting against, item ED1 passes. This concludes our agenda. Before we go to call of the wards, I just want to thank everyone, especially our staff, but also everyone sitting on this dais and the community for what, by my count, are nine consecutive Mondays of city council meetings. There is not a city council meeting next Monday, so everyone enjoy the two-week break before we come back, two weeks from today, on the 22nd of November. With that, it's time for call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Kelly.
I want to remind first ward residents that we have the Subcommittee on Housing of Planning and Development in room 2404, Wednesday at 6:00. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. So I just first want to send a word of condolences and prayers to the family of Gwen Edmonds, who was funeralized this past Friday, I believe. My days are running together. Gwen Edmonds, for many, many years, was a minister of music, Sherman United Methodist, before that, at First Church of God, played, I think, at over 10 churches over the, her lifespan. She was remembered for her wonderful smile, her Christian service to our city of Evanston, so continue to pray for her family. I also want to recognize, as you all have worked with him in the past, Mr. Dave Davis with Northwestern, who is funeralizing his father this Friday. So prayers to Dave Davis and his family during the time of your loss. And then finally, our second ward meeting that was scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 to discuss the budget. I'm going to have to work with Kelly and staff just in terms of lining up a place, hopefully at Robert Crown, to, to host our meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
I wanted to thank the community members who came out to chat with me at my office hours last Thursday, and let them know that the next office hours will be December 2nd, Thursday, at, from 7:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. at Brothers K. But of course, if you'd like to meet with me or talk with me, please just contact me by text or email, and we can set up a time. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Office hours next Saturday, November 13th, 10 to noon at Reprise Roasters.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, just a reminder about the parking meeting that we're holding on, on November 17th, 7 p.m. at Double Clutch at 2121 Ashland. The parking division manager, Michael Rivera, will be there, and will be looking into solutions to improve parking in the Hill Arts District. We also have two business kind of community meetings coming up. One is for SIBA, which is roughly businesses that operate on Church and Dodge, on stretches of Emerson, and Ridge, and, and Emerson. That is going to be November 10th at 10:30 a.m. at Gibbs Morrison. And then we're meeting with Hill Arts Business Group on 11/17, 3 p.m. at Double Clutch in Hill Arts. Other businesses on Dewey, Payne, Simpson, you know, near Soul and Smoke, and Double Clutch, and Jennifer Addables, et cetera. So looking forward to seeing folks come out to those three meetings.
Councilmember Revelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, this Thursday, November 11th, 7 p.m., a virtual Sixth and Seventh Ward Budget Meeting. And then on Saturday morning, November 13th, 10 to 12, in person at Chandler. We're going to have some informal feedback on the concerts this past summer at Canal Shores, and then just, residents are invited to just come for, have conversation about issues of concern. Look forward to seeing as many residents as possible.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I just want to announce a ward meeting for the eighth ward. It'll be on Saturday, November 27th. As I have been saying, we will have award meetings every, and I want to drill this into people's minds so you know it. We'll have award meetings the last Thursday of every month, except for November and December. And in this case, this November, we're going to have a ward meeting on Saturday, Saturday, November, oh, that is right after Thanksgiving. But we'll still do it. It's virtual. Folks can come, and we'll be discussing the budget. If that ward meeting happens to shift, certainly it'll go out in a newsletter, if it gets moved a week ahead.
Councilmember Fleming?
Ward meeting on Wednesday, the 17th. It is scheduled for virtual, but I think we can probably go back in person. So look for an email. We have the two emails. We have the newsletter from the city and the newsletter from my listserv. So look for those coming up this week. Also, just wanted to acknowledge the death of Joyce Thompson, Thomas, sorry. She was my cousin, she lived in Georgia. She was from Evanston, but the unique thing I learned about her actually in her obituaries is that she founded General Assistance. I knew that she had been, I think, the first African-American property inspector we had here at the city. And then I read in her obituary that she founded General Assistance and ran it for, I think, 10 years before she retired from the city. So just want to acknowledge her and her family, even though they have left Evanston, they, they love the city. And so just thank her for her work.
And with that, seeing nothing further to come before us, the city council meeting of November 8th stands adjourned.